Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for the regular Board of Education meeting this evening. It's December 7th, 2021. I'm sorry that we are a little bit late. It's now 5:17, according to my computer, and I would like, at this point, to ask, we have some many guests here tonight. I would like, if they would like, the orchestra to please lead us in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. I would just like to mention, thank you very much. You were wonderful, and I loved the unison. It was beautiful. I would like to mention that their board is being attended tonight virtually by Mary Mrs. Wells, but the rest of the board is in place, and so just to make that on the record. And with that, I would
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for the regular Board of Education meeting this evening. It's December 7th, 2021. I'm sorry that we are a little bit late. It's now 5:17 according to my computer. And I would like, at this point, to ask, we have some many guests here tonight. I would like, if they would like, the orchestra to please lead us in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. I would just like to mention, thank you very much. You were wonderful, and I loved the unison. It was beautiful. I would like to mention that their board is being attended tonight virtually by Mary Mrs. Wells, but the rest of the board is in place, and so just to make that on the record. And with that, I would like to ask, if there was anything from the closed session?
No, can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I'll second that. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Report of closed session, Dr. Bergy.
President Marcus, there was no action in closed session.
Okay, so at this point, I would like to turn the microphone over to our entertainment tonight.
Great, and I think we're going to be reseated. Are we going to be reseated after?
Yeah.
Or right now?
Right now.
Okay, awesome.
the principal of our amazing middle school, and our kiddos are performing on the 20th at one of our local senior centers. And when I heard that they were, had they practiced and they're ready for that performance, but then I thought, we need to hear them first. We have put our love and sweat, and Ms. Valens has worked so hard with them. I wanted the board to hear them first, and it is our first performance since COVID. And we wanted you guys to have that honor tonight, and I am just so proud of our kiddos, and I have goosebumps. Like, thank you guys for being here, and I want to introduce Ms. Valens. She is one of our humble heroes of COVID. What she has done for our kids during virtual learning, and then even coming back in person and not having a classroom, and so many things because of it. I am so thankful for her and what she has done for all of you guys. So I want her to come and introduce her amazing thing.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're really honored to be here. We're so excited to accept this invitation. Like Dr. Skon said, this is the BVMS Advanced Orchestra. We have been working really hard all year, and these guys are not only ready to play, you know, the three or four songs that they would normally play in our winter concert, but they've been eating up the music that I've been giving them so fast that we decided to put together an entire concert just on our own and take the show on the road. So we contacted Sunrise of Beverly Hills, a local senior home, and will be playing there on December 20th. These guys are kicking butt, and I think you're really going to enjoy what you hear this evening. I just want you to know, kiddos, I'm so proud of you, and I'm really excited to be here with you. I'm very excited to be your teacher, and I hope you know that I love you. So, thank you for being here with me. We're going to play three pieces for you tonight. We're going to start with the music from The Nutcracker. We will follow that by Pachelbel's Canon in D, a very famous piece, and then we will close with a very upbeat, energetic piece called Contra Dance. We hope you enjoy. Thank you for having us. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
All right, orchestra, stand and away.
Very, very, very well done.
It's okay, now we get it.
Very well done. I should be really proud.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can take them out to the hallway. There's a rack.
Yeah.
Yes.
piece.
Amazing. Oh, my gosh, Ms. Valens. Amazing.
Never had that at a board meeting in a long time. I never even remembered that.
Next time? Anytime. We have more music.
We should start everybody.
Yes.
Now, we should end. Now we can go home.
It's crazy.
Can I give you my card?
Vanity over comfort.
Vanity.
So nice of you, but I just can't. I run through.
Can you fetch this woman's card?
Yes.
Is anybody pulling from consent?
I'm not.
Nope.
Nope. Okay.
Mary.
Okay, moving right along. Where's my mouse? I believe the next item on the agenda is going to be the accommodations and recognition of one of our wonderful students, Tim Ellis.
PBIS.
Right?
7B first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. 7B, I'm sorry. Beverly Hills High School PBIS Spotlight. I didn't, okay. And who's going to be presenting?
Wonderful. So, thank you. And as a reminder, we are a full implementation of PBIS at all of our school sites. In fact, you will recall the awards that we have received from LA County in our implementation. And this evening, in our spotlight, is our high school team, and I would like to introduce Mr. Torrey Johnson, Assistant Principal.
Evening to the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present before you and to the PBIS team that's joining. Our team at the high school is synonymous with excellence, and it's so great to be a part of this team, and it's expertly led by Phil Chang, so I definitely have to give a round of applause to him for leading us this year and in past years as well. I think what's going to be important for us to discuss is to talk about our Tier Two implementation process, and to also kind of give an overview of the program and our volunteer reward system that we have in place this year that's continuing with a new program that we have. We do have our in-person rewards program that has returned back to the high school, so that's the opportunity for students and staff to be nominated by staff, parents, and students. And our team goes out to classrooms to have students spend this great wheel and have these prizes that are given to our students. We just actually went out this past Monday, and it was really a great opportunity to see. So as our PowerPoint is up now, we can go on to a few more slides to the next one. Thank you. We also have new this year our volunteer grade check program, which we'll talk about here shortly, and our welcome back program, which Mr. Chang will mention, and then our check-in, check-out mentor pilot program that Ms. Bond will share. Next slide? All right. So, at the beginning of the school year, kind of noticed, right at the line in the cafeteria, it was a little hectic, and once we were able to rein our students in and have some uniformity there, we also had an opportunity to talk with students about grades. And this was pretty much voluntary, that students would show their Aries, and if they had grades of Cs or better, that they would be able to get one of our PBIS cards. And every Friday per quarter, we started in the month of October, and we're going to do the volunteer check again in December, that students would be able to be a part of a raffle. of a raffle. And it simply was students sharing their grades, putting their ID numbers on the back of the card. And we round up those cards. And then every Friday, we will, we give students the opportunity to get a gift card. And those gift cards are actually supported by the PTSA. So, definitely a shout out to them for supporting the PBIS program. And students loved it. It really has built a sense of camaraderie and ownership from students on our campus. And it's been really great to see. We've had kids who, you know, trashed around campus and being able to clean up that trash and get a PBIS card. So, many of the administrators, we use that as a springboard to initiate conversations with students. So, it's really been a great opportunity. And of course, the goal is to encourage students to, one, improve their grades and to have a clean campus. Next slide. All right. And on to Kristy. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you, Torrey. And thank you to the board for, again, for letting us be here. And I just want to say what a pleasure it is to work with the team this year. I'm new to the team this year. Not new to PBIS, but it's been great and exciting to work with the team. It's a pleasure to be on the team and be able to work closely with students, teachers, and counselors in this process. So, with our check-in, check-out mentor pilot program this year, we were really looking for a way to add an additional support in addition to all of the supports that we have and all the activities that we have going on. We were looking for a way to add another, more individualized support for these students who were struggling. So, at the 10-week grading period, we pulled a list of students who were really struggling and had Ds and Fs on their report card. And we identified where these students were struggling the most and the most critical students, the students who had the most critical need. And we were able to pair them up with teacher volunteers who are mentors for these students. So, we paired them up with these teacher volunteers who are mentors with these students. And they're meeting with these students once per week in individual meetings. And they're working with students to help improve the students' participation and success skills that are all connected and relating to our PBIS core values. And the benefits of these check-in, check-out system and the process is that they're providing additional supports, as I said, for these students that are going above and beyond what's already in place. But it's also allowing additional time for students and teachers to be able to make more meaningful connections. It's supporting and promoting our PBIS core values. And it's actually allowing also the counselors to be able to have more of a connection with teachers and students and giving us more communication avenues there so that we're all connected in helping support the students and giving them that additional individualized support that they need. So, that was the quick for me. And I want to be able to turn it back over to Phil now, who is our team leader and doing an excellent job. And he's going to be able to give you a little bit of information about our results so far and how it's been going.
All right. Thank you, Kristy. All right. So, and thank you, Torrey, for leading us off there. So, yeah. Under the direction of the LaCo PBS team and Angela Lawyer, the district PBS coordinator, we started Tier Two this year, as Torrey said. And one of the main components is the check-in, check-out program, as Kristy introduced. And, you know, big picture, what we're thinking is to take the results that we got. And so far, we did a pilot team of about six to 10 teachers. And we paired them up with one kid who was most at risk for the time being. And so far, we've gotten some really good results. The kids generally felt that they, you know, they felt happy that somebody was reaching out to them and that somebody really, like, you know, individually cared about them and their success in the, you know, overall schedule, right, that they had. So, hopefully, we can take some of this data, the grades improving, as well as some of the testimonials from the teachers. And we can present it next semester early and show teachers and other faculty members that, you know, this is fairly successful. And then hopefully, we can get more volunteers and eventually expand. And we can reach out to, you know, kids who may have one D or F on their schedule or on their, on their report card. And also maybe extend out to kids who may be teetering on, you know, eligibility issues with sports and athletics. And hopefully, we can, you know, get, you know, all the teachers involved, like, you know, get one-on-one with at least one or two students. That's the, you know, overall goal. And hopefully, that'll also reduce some of the workload of, like, the planning and mentoring for all the teachers, right? So that they have kind of, they spend less time planning with, like, you know, 100 students. And then they can just use that time to maybe plan with two students and then spend more time with the implementation aspect of it, right? So, the intervention aspect. So, this is, Tier Two is actually built on top of Tier One. So, all the other things that we've been doing in the past are still going on. We started expanding the in-person rewards to as many classes as possible. Every time we go in, it's a very positive experience. So, we're kind of like connecting with all the, all the types of students now. You know, some of the ones that need a little nudge, you know, some of the ones that need a little more hands-on intervention. And, you know, hopefully, this will lead us into Tier Three eventually, or soon, sorry. Sorry, I set a timer for us so we don't go. You know, soon, when we, when we get to Tier Three, hopefully, we'll be ready. And we'll give you an update then. But so far, it looks really positive. And I hope to see this program grow and spread. And, you know, we can work together with all the, all the grade levels to make this really work. All right. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for being here this evening. That really was a wonderful presentation. Nice to have, check in with all various levels. And if there's any questions for many members of the board that they'd like to ask, we have Mary, who's up first tonight. Mary, have any comment or?
Well, I just would like to say how much I support this program. I think it's so vitally important, especially at this time with, with COVID and the kids being back in school. I really like that not only is it providing academic support, but that it's building on that camaraderie and building that connection, which is also providing that social and emotional support for not just the students, but it's also providing it for the teachers. And I think it's just so very important for us to be focusing on that. And this is a great program, along with the Normanade program. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Raymer.
I'm a big fan of the PBIS program. Mr. Chang, thank you so much for really jumping into this. I know that. They were rather humble when they were giving this presentation because this program is award-winning and I imagine will continue to remain so as, as the, the program grows and more staff members get involved. But so, thank you for the work you do. I was in a class about three weeks ago when, during my fifth period, when someone had one and you came in to spin the wheel. And I know that the whole class got very excited. And I think it's just a generally very good thing to have and is very motivating to a lot of students. So, thank you for the work you do, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you, Mr. Raymer. And Mr. Halimi.
I'm just going to, but add this to the list of programs. I had no idea that existed, but just immensely proud that it's in place. But thank you, guys, for the great work that you guys are doing and clearly great engagement here with the students. So, thank you.
Dr. Stern.
Yes, thank you so much. I think for those of you who, who know that there's a lot of acronyms in education and maybe some of you watching don't realize that PBIS is actually Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, which is really a great notion because long, a long time ago, a lot of the way we managed children was through largely negative consequences. And the whole premise of this is really wonderful. And they, and everyone here, all the professionals here have really branched out to make it very incentivizing in many ways so that behavior is not only positive, but also that it is altruistic and that there are fellow students who are becoming mentors. And that's really an extension that I have not yet seen. But this is a very promising and wonderful, award-winning, in fact, program. And I really, I really salute you guys for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Margot.
Thank you all. My colleagues did a wonderful job expressing my sentiments as well. It'll be a great day when we have, one way or another, 100% participation in, in any form in this system because it'll promote a better environment for all of our students and, and faculty as well. Thank you.
And I would just like to say a few words. This program starts in the elementary grade level at the elementary and runs through the middle school and then to the high school. And then each, as it goes up, it becomes adapted to the level of the, the students. And I, I like to see what the high school has done to make the kids feel so connected and to see it also into the academics, which I don't know how much of it is, there is in the actual lower grades. But I really think that you're making it so meaningful. And it's a program that is just, can be only commended for what you're doing. And I think it does a lot for the spirit of the kids, too. And I'm sure that in the long run, any suspensions and things like that are going to go down because of the interventions of the PBIS program. So, I, I think that you are to be commended at the high school for carrying it on in such a way that it adds meaning from when they start in the lower grades. And of course, you've probably have had, we've had the program about three, three years now. And it's been amazing how you've adapted it at the high school, and I'm really proud of it. So, thank you again for being here this evening. We really loved seeing you and keep up the good work. In addition, while I'm on this topic right now, I'd just like to make a comment about all of the programs and all of the presentations we get with the elementary, the middle, and the high school and what's going on in our classes is something that gives me the greatest amount of pleasure to see what's happening in education. There's so much going on and that we can present it to the community. I think it really is, it just shows how great our teachers are and how committed they are and how we're able to keep our Beverly Hills School District in the forefront of, for our students. And I really appreciate these presentations. And I just wanted to share that tonight because I think it's something that just struck me that we've been getting these almost every meeting that I've been here now, something that's going on in each of the schools. And it's really, it really makes it so meaningful what's going on. So, I'd just like to share that. Okay. So, moving right along, we have another recommend, another accommodation or recognition. I think I'll turn this over to Mr. Ellis because I think he might know something about this one.
It's my pleasure to. I'm going to show a little video. Danielle Hollander is a young lady junior at the high school. It's her running out in the pack. And those of you who don't know cross-country, she's an outstanding young runner for us. And you showed you the magnitude and the number of people that she has run against and has run. And I'll, I'll list off her accomplishments here as she's gone through. She was the junior girls' race winner at the Rosemead Invitational. She won the varsity races at the Woodbridge Invitational. It's one of the most prestigious invitationals in Southern California. The Temecula Twilight Invitational, she was first place, as well as a Bell Jeff Sacred Heart Individual. She was also the Ocean League champion. She advanced through the CIF. She was seventh in the CIF Division Four Girls Race, advanced to the state, was 12th in the state out of 220 young ladies that were running. Just an outstanding young race runner, does a great job. And it's not always the most glamorous of sports. You're running all over the place by yourself a lot of times. And I wanted to bring some recognition to her because she's outstanding, does a great job for us. And we're really looking forward to having her back next year as a senior and break some more records. So, she's going to run track this year. I'm going to pull her up on the screen there. Danielle, if you want to introduce yourself and say a couple of words, we would appreciate it. If you can unmute yourself. There we go.
Hold on one second, Danielle.
Hang on. Technical difficulties. In fact, when she was running, her time in the league finals was faster than anybody that ran Boars or Girls. So, she's just an amazing young athlete. And her brother Josh was also the boys' Ocean League champion as well. So, they're quite the running family, and it's pretty exciting. Do we have her? Unmute yourself, Danielle. Ah.
Mr. Chang just spoke, so it's definitely looking.
Can't hear you, Danielle. Yeah, Danielle, we can't hear you. We're trying to fix it.
It's not us.
Danielle, is there a setting on your computer because Mr. Chang just spoke and we couldn't hear you.
On mute? I mean. No. Yeah, it's on our side.
What if I hear incoming? Yeah, yeah.
Danielle, if you go to Speaker Real Tech and Audio Real Tech, that should work. Up arrow on the mute.
Now?
Yay!
Thank you, Mr. Chang.
Mr. Chang is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Thank you for recognizing me tonight and all I've done with cross-country. It's been an amazing season. We haven't had a real season since 2019, my freshman year. So, it's been great to run this year and meet all of my new teammates and just work out with them every day. We've had a lot of fun this season. And now, we're getting ready for track, and we have our first race this Saturday. So, it's been a lot of fun.
Congratulations, Danielle. Well, proud of you. Thank you, President Marcus of the Board, Dr. Reggie, for allowing us to recognize Danielle.
Can I say a few words?
Please.
Well, first of all, Danielle, congratulations. I think that's wonderful. And I was so proud as you were running. And I, of course, I saw that Normans across your T-shirt, and it really made me proud. So, I wanted to share that with you. And just out of curiosity, what do you, will you be doing in track? Which event do you run in track?
I usually focus on the mile and two-mile.
Okay, great. And while I'm at that, say hello to your father.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Thank you.
Okay. By the way, his father was my student. Okay. So, now we have the agenda hearing period. And I believe we have one person that we are going to hear from, a lady by the name of Sarah Gold. Sarah Gold is out there. Please unmute yourself, and we're ready to hear from you.
She's not here and she's not in the waiting room.
Big pardon?
She's not here and she's not in the waiting room. Hand did send her the link, but we have not heard.
Oh. I guess then we will just omit that one.
Comments are going to the right. If I send her comments, we'll go into the right.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. Then we. Calendar. I don't believe we were pulling anything.
I was, yeah, I was going to pull one thing, and we didn't ask Mrs. Wells if she's pulling anything.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item 10D.
10B?
D. D is in dog.
D is in dog. Okay. I will second the motion. Call for the question, minus item 10D. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Mrs., Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That makes it five and O with a provisional vote, six and O. Okay. I will make a motion to approve item 10D, 2021, 2022 site plans for student achievement.
I will second.
Thank you. I don't know who pulled the comment.
I did.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I would ask, I'll guess I'll ask you, my Dr. Reggie, but perhaps Dustin will want to chime in on this. What is the, in reading through the, the plans, there's a lot that is implemented to gear towards student success. What metrics and evaluation do we use year to year to see what was successful in the plan, what's carried over to continue in the following year, and what things, excuse me, what things are kind of 86th moving forward? moving forward as they showed not to be successful? Where is the, you know, um, results of that?
I think Mr. Seaman can probably answer that question.
Hey, good evening Board of Education. Um, so for the site plans itself, that's their Site Council's Accountability Plan. So I'm gonna kind of break it down a little bit is ultimately for us as the district and the Board of Education, the local control and accountability plan, the LCAP, is where we begin. But we took it even a step further. We started with the strategic plan. So really, we govern ourselves and kind of set those metrics with our strategic plan. And then I'm gonna say we, uh, meet the levels of each as we work our way down. So strategic plan is really our ultimate goal of met, like, how are we successful? LCAP then just emphasizes or, um, uh, sets that accountability piece for LACO for us, but we're still bound to that strategic plan. And then within that, each of the sites utilize their site councils to determine how best to meet our goals from our strategic plan. So at the end of each year, at their site council meetings, they will report back to their site councils the success of what was delivered, um, also kind of any additional support. And then that kind of is brought back to Dr. Braggie, myself and the cabinet. Um, and then we will do a presentation to you guys around the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that does help. So in that meeting at the end of the year when they evaluated, do, do they honestly remove things that they find aren't successful?
Correct, yes. Yep, absolutely. So it, it definitely, their plan is much more fluid than our LCAP or our strategic plan is. So within their site council meetings, um, sorry, I keep pointing over at Kelly. I see Craig, Sarah and Mark on the screen. Uh, they have multiple meetings throughout the school year, uh, pretty consistent. And so during those meetings, they're constantly monitoring and, and creating different opportunities and bringing, um, new opportunities, uh, to their site council as a thought partner. And then, uh, ultimately, anything that goes into procedure or policy would always come to you guys.
Thank you. That, that answers my question.
Is it, okay?
Yeah.
I just want you to know that those are very, very comprehensive plans. And I was reading through them. It was really amazing what the site councils have put together on those plans. And, uh, to prove that I did read them, of course, you saw.
Yep, yep, yep. Yes, a- a- and I think the principals too, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I'm going to. Is that, uh, their instructional leadership teams, their site councils, um, a lot of, you know, their grade level specialists, their department chairs. Uh, they definitely do, uh, rely on and pick from a lot of different people on their campus for, to build out those plans. So it's, it's really team effort for all of them. Ultimately though, they're the, they're the four authors at the end of the day, which is great too. So it's a lot of work on them. So, thank you principals.
Really shows and thank you. Okay, I will, if there's no further comment, I will call for the question. Uh, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. And so item ten D passes with the five and oh and six provisional vote. Okay.
Mrs. Marcus, can I just add one more comment? I apologize.
Sure, go right ahead.
I didn't pull it, but I just wanted to say that hover cam e-glass that we've just voted for on item ten oh is wickedly awesome. If you have a chance to look at that, no, you don't have to get it. Just if you have a chance to look at the YouTube presentation on it, it's fascinating. So.
And they're using it in all the colleges and universities at this point. So it's so cool for like a physics, math, science course. The way that.
Can you speak into the mic? Sorry, just 'cause no one can hear us. I'm sorry.
You can just go back in.
I just got YouTubeed.
Yeah, the exciting part is, uh, the technology team bringing this to us. Um, all the colleges and universities are utilizing it, like currently right now, I'm in Vanderbilt. And so everything I study in Ecom is on the glass. You see the professor speaking directly to me, but it flips everything to the student. Um, and so like for your physics class, uh, the robotics team will actually be one of the pilot programs with it. Um, our sciences and our math, it's really gonna be able to help teachers see the students while still instructing versus we used to go like this all the time and you can't hear me any longer. So now I can look right at you, one, monitor your behavior, make sure you're not sleeping, and then two, be able to deliver instructions directly. So it's cool. So thank you David Damacoe and his team as well.
Right now we have three of them. I see, are we planning to, uh, have any more in the future if they're possible to get them?
Yes, uh, so what, what we hope to do right now is, um, uh, Nancy Minakozy, Karen Legola, who are our I four coaches at the high school. They will have one unit in the multimedia center in hopes to start training and gaining that momentum with the teachers. And then we're also piloting within the science and the robotics programs. So that way we can also kind of gain that momentum with it. We don't want to just dump the technology in. We want to start training first, see who's interested and kind of keep it moving forward.
Great. I think it's a marvelous idea. Does anybody else, okay?
So we'll get you all to come play with it in the multimedia center one day.
Good idea. Okay, um, well, I believe we have come now to your report, Dr. Braggie.
Good evening. Good evening. Let me take a minute here to get this set up. Just a short report for you this evening. I want to start off by something that was, uh, a very meaningful, um, ceremony that was, uh, this past Sunday, um, at Roxbury Park, uh, commemorating the fifteenth anniversary of the, uh, tragic death of Bahan Setian. We were there with the Setian family. Um, as you can see, uh, Chief Stainbrook is there. Let's see, who else is there? Uh, Lester Friedman, Bob Wonderlich, um, and myself and, uh, Ms. Starkins was there. Um, and just so many other parents and community members. Just a very, um, wonderful time to be able to be there together to talk about, the Setian family, what they've done for our community, uh, and their work towards every fifteen minutes. Another opportunity to partner with our city is the opportunity to have, uh, be at the Swearingen for our new police chief, Mark Stainbrook. And here is a picture of Mrs. Wells, myself. And, um, I do want to give some credit to Mrs. Marcus. Mrs. Marcus was there, but then she left. So I hope you don't mind that we, we put you in there. So I know that there had been, um, a lot of conversations. It's been a tough time in, uh, our schools as it relates to security, uh, just lately. Uh, and specifically centering around the tragedy that happened at Oxford High School in, in Michigan. And it's really stirred up a lot of anxiety in all of our communities. Um, and so we are working very closely together, um, all of our school communities to ensure that when information is being, uh, pushed out or if there is any type of threat at all, that it absolutely becomes our highest priority. Uh, we have great communication sharing that happens between our school districts, but also within each of our schools. There is high level of preparation for, uh, these types of situations. Um, and even in our administration meetings, uh, we are consistently trained. In fact, we have another, uh, training tomorrow with our administration, our leadership team, um, as it relates to, uh, any type of security, any type of disruption, um, really any type of discipline. And I would just caution everybody as bits and pieces of this, uh, this case at the high school are, are pushed out, uh, to, to just, just wait to, to see what, um, the final report is. Um, information from schools, uh, is confidential. And so there's a lot of, uh, rumors and there's a lot of stories that are being passed along. Some of them, of course, will be true, but some of them, of course, we're gonna find out, um, you know, what happened. We, we learn best uh, from these types of scenarios. We take them very seriously and we're able to get higher level reports, uh, to see how the school worked with the police community. And that's really what's the most important thing is how we work with our police department. Uh, we feel very prepared. Um, however, I do want to push this caution out, uh, really in warning to any student, um, that, with the, um, the allegations about what happens with social media and what's being pushed around with not only bullying, but also with, um, any threat at all, they are taken very seriously. Um, and so despite what happened in Michigan and, and, and what didn't in a timely way, I can assure you here in the Beverly Hills Unified School District, we take this very seriously. Not only is there removal of a student, but there's a full investigation and it's in cooperation with the police department. So we take it very seriously here in BHUSD. And any student that ever has any information at all about something that they do not feel comfortable um, or has information that they want to share confidentially, that there are ways to do that and to reach out to any staff member in any of our schools. So quickly, just about the Omicron variant that you're hearing in the news. Um, I really appreciate the way that the LA County Department of Public Health has, uh, received information about the variant. Um, we're in a very controlled, uh, we're in a very, um, uh, interesting time in this pandemic in that, um, we've learned a lot from the past. Um, and so we're just learning about this variant. So we're not, um, you know, we're not, we're not just getting scared. We're not gonna, you, you've not seen anything that's put out by our school district to, um, scare anybody. We're not trying to, um, you know, this is an overkill to get people to be, uh, and get a vaccination. This is just the reality of where we are with the next variant. And so, um, there are three cases as of yesterday in LA County. Of course, there's going to be more. Um, we're watching it very closely. We're partnering with all of our, um, uh, our organizations that support the work that we do. Uh, and we just don't know. And so we're going to really rely on what we have in place because what we have in place is working. And so instead of sensationalizing this issue, we're really looking at the science, we're really looking at the facts. And bottom line is, we're gonna fall back on the protocols that we've put into place that we've really mastered, uh, because of our teaching staff, because of our administration and what's happening in our community homes, that this, this is working for us. And we're gonna rely on what we do best. And we've done that for, uh, almost two years now. So California is doing the work for us, really. They're doing, they're looking at the science, they're, they're looking and they're partnering with other organizations to learn as much as they can, um, about what's happening. Um, and they then report that information to superintendents through our required meetings, uh, with the, with the county. Many school districts now are really starting to increase their COVID nineteen testing. And as a reminder, thanks to our Board of Education, we're really on the short list of school districts in the state of California that have required testing for our students. And I'm really thankful for that. And that's another reason why we are in the place that we are is because of our robust testing that we offer, not only the rapid antigen testing at our district office, but also the PCR testing that's happening at each of our schools each week. So of course, we're learning and we're protecting ourselves just like we always have. We will continue to provide you with information. We're not going to, um, get ahead of ourselves here and get emotional, uh, about what's happening. We're really waiting and we're doing the right thing and we're, we're thinking before we act. And that's why you have not seen, uh, any panic announcements from us. We believe that not only the Om- Omicron variant, but the next variant, because the mutations are there, they're gonna continue to be there. And that we're ready not only for this new variant, um, but the next one as well. You know, the Delta variant is still the, the, the variant that is, um, about ninety-nine percent of new cases are still the Delta variant. So a couple of points here that, that I just want to mention really quickly. Of course, the number one layer of protection is our vaccination. Um, continue to wear the masks. We have been in great contact with LA County and the masks are not going away. Um, as new variants are coming, um, masks are going to be here to stay for a while. Obviously, the fourth point is to get tested. And again, I talked about how robust our testing program is. I know it's on our agenda this evening. Um, and it's a strong recommendation from our administration that, um, our Board of Education approve contracts that are gonna put us in really, uh, a, a very good place and a very confident place for whatever the beginning of two thousand twenty-two brings us, that we will be ready, um, for anything that, that happens and comes our way. And then lastly, and I'm just gonna pick on this one for a little bit because, um, you know, stay home if you're sick. Stay home if you're feeling sick. And I know that that sounds really trite and that's, you know, you, you would not think that I would have to pause on this point. Uh, but we continue to have, you know, families where they have somebody who has tested positive in their, in their household. And, uh, when that happens, we ask that you, um, you have to isolate yourself. And so pandemic's not over. Um, people have kind of gone away from that isolation, uh, that you was pretty strong in the beginning, uh, where people would be completely closed off in a downstairs, downstairs area or, you know, a bed, a bedroom. Um, and we're finding that that's just not happening. And so, um, we do ask people that if you do have somebody in your household that is positive. You know, unless you're going to, um, keep yourself quarantined, you know, just, or just isolated is, was what we're asking. Um, we're finding that if you're just doing the quarantine, that eventually siblings are becoming positive and, um, if, if we can avoid siblings that are coming to school, uh, coming from an environment where somebody isn't isolated, it would be appreciated. Cause that's, that's kind of where that transmission is happening now. It's, it's happening. Um, we're, we're fortunate. It's not happening from student to student, but it is happening within the home. So we do ask everybody to, um, you know, just take note of, uh, staying home. If you're sick, you don't feel well, get tested because again, we have the best testing program, you know, in Southern California, hands down. And that if you have somebody in your house that has tested positive, uh, to take those precautions, uh, so that it's not impacting, uh, other students and staff. So we have our dashboard. You know, I would like to just give you a quick update here, um, with, we have ten active cases. Um, nine students, uh, one staff member. And this is not something, this is not a surprise to us. Uh, this is, um, you know, this is, you know, what happens after you have a break. And so we had our Thanksgiving break. Um, and so I think nine is, uh, a number that we, uh, we thought that we would be around this number. So, uh, we're very comfortable with this number. Um, and again, with the upcoming holidays, um, really, uh, test before, you know, during and after your travels. Uh, just one thing I'd like to point out, just because I know that, you know, when I'm, go to events and I'm at places and, um, this actually came up when I was at the memorial yesterday, uh, Sunday, uh, at Roxbury Park. You know, parents wanting really quick resolutions to questions and, and some, some issues that are happening in our schools. And we really have a systemic way of really trying to be able to do that because our jobs are, are, you know, very much like other jobs in the industry where most communication now is happening through email. And it's really quick to be able to do that. And so if you think about your own job and what it was like for expectations for email, uh, they have just, uh, exponentially changed because it's so easy to get in contact with somebody. And so that's the world we live in and that's great. But the message that we have is something that we've sent out before. It's just time that we do it again, is to really target and kind of direct where those questions go. Um, and so really the, the most important thing that I would want people to know is that if you do have a question or a concern about something that happens in a classroom, is that your child's teacher is that first person to go to. What we have learned in our experience year after year is that if you stay closest to where the issue is occurring, that's when you'll get the best result or resolution from people that are already aware of the situation or the people that might be involved in any type of situation. And obviously, if you are not satisfied with that interaction, then that's when we ask that you go to your school assistant principal or principal. Again, they are closer to the classroom issue, uh, but we do, we do really insist that you give the staff, the teachers, that opportunity to be able to have that conversation with you before something that gets elevated. But we always want to have that opportunity if something didn't go right, you know, that you have that opportunity to reach out to somebody else like your site administration. And if that doesn't go well and you're still not getting to where you need to get, then of course, um, the team at the district office have an amazing cabinet team that jumps in and also helps and assists. I would be that next person that, uh, I would be that next person that will jump in to assist and help. And we, there's, there's never a meeting that, that has reached me, that has gone through all of those, those scenarios so that we can get resolutions. I'm always willing to jump into that resolution process, you know, as long as the people that are closest to that issue have done everything they can to try to work something out. And then of course, our Board of Education is kind of that last group of people. I can't remember a time when we weren't able to solve it. But, you know, I think that really any problem that, that I've seen in the last five years that I've been here, there's always creative ways to reach a resolution when all voices have the opportunity to be heard. Just a quick update for the swim gym. We're getting closer to that date for our ribbon cutting ceremony, but I just wanted to provide you with some pictures. You can see on the left-hand side, people have reached out to us wondering where the B and the S is. And we're going to put that BS up really quickly. So, so that's going to be coming up. You can see that they're still working is what I'm trying to say. Oh, that's right. That's right. It's with the B and the S, so.
What did you say?
He was looking for the, the D in update. And I said, it's with the B and the S.
Apparently, the administration just feels certain letters, 23 letters are enough for our alphabet now. They're just not even bothered with the other three anymore.
That's right. And so the middle picture is just, you can see how this is coming along so nicely, this branding. And it's just, it's, it's a lot of work, but it really makes the impact that, that we're looking for, that you would see at our private schools. And it's, it's, we're no longer, you know, in the days where people are just going to be slapping up posters and, you know, we're, we're really doing a good job of keeping everything through the branding because everything matters and that visual look is, is something that really stays with people for a long time. And they're really starting to notice that, that there is, you know, there, there is a process behind, you know, getting to where we, that professional look and that collegiate look. And that's, that's exactly where we're headed. And that last picture is just where we will be dropping the, the crest. Finally, a very exciting meeting before we are able to hit the holidays. And that is our, our organizational board meeting. And so that will be next week. So we're very excited about that. That will happen next Tuesday. We'll send out that link for you so that you're able to see that as we swear in our new officers. So very excited about that meeting as well. And thank you very much. Going to go look for that D.
To that, we're fresh.
All right.
Okay. Any comments from members of the board regarding the wonderful presentation, Mrs. Wells?
Well, no, no comments, just thank you for that wonderful update.
Okay, Mr. Raymer.
No comments from me, thank you.
Mr. Halimi.
I just want to thank you for the presentation and the amount of time but taken about school safety and how seriously it's undertaken. There's no bigger priority, obviously, when parents send their kids to school. We have to do everything we can. And I know how on top of it the administration is and just thank you for.
You bet.
You know, reiterating the point, thanks.
Dr. Stern.
I want to echo Mr. Halimi's sentiments that there is perhaps no, no further, no other priority higher than safety and physical well-being at, at the school. So thank you, Dr. Braggie, for your comprehensive report and reassurances.
You bet.
Thank you, Dr. Braggie. The, the COVID dashboard, we have a total cases of 79. Does anybody know what day of school was today as far as the number day are we? And how many days left in the summer? I think it's 11.
Probably close to like 80.
80 something. Okay, so, so what, what is happening if, you know, geeks like me notice is that the average, the average, the case per day was, was like 1.3, 1.4 prior to the testing program and it's coming down to almost one.
Correct.
So that's a good sign that the program is working. So just keep aware of that as the statistics continue, watch that. So if the, the day of school is under the number of cases or sorry, is over the number of cases that we have, that we have broken down from the one threshold to under one case a day, which is really fantastic to get there because in 180-day school year, you're going to have less than 180 cases by the end of the school year. And that includes all the staff too, that 79 was everybody.
Yep.
So that's, that's a good news. So good job, everybody. Thank you very much. And you said if the board approves the testing, we did already, it was in consent.
Oh, great.
Done, that's how good you are.
Well, thank you.
Everything I've written down on here was just covered by all the members of the board. So I can only thank you for that wonderful presentation. I would just like to mention, just briefly, I was at the wrestling match this weekend. Saw those beautiful, that's a brand-new mat and it's absolutely gorgeous. But you know what really impressed me? I mean, other than the fact that I was there for a former student, that they had two girls wrestling in the wrestling meet, which I thought was really fantastic. So, and so everything that was mentioned just previously on the board, I echo. And thank you again for that very comprehensive report, Dr. Braggie.
You bet.
And now, Mr. Raymer.
Alrighty, I'll tell KBEV now, it was fully my fault last time with the feedback, but we shouldn't have the problem this time because I won't be sharing my audio, I hope. Yeah, let's get into it. Alrighty, so December 7th meeting, student board member report. Starting with Isol as we do. And also the rest. So as Mrs. Marcus just mentioned, we had a wrestling tournament held here, which our team absolutely dominated, which was fantastic to see. I know that they've been working extremely hard. And now they also have some additional members on the team with the end of football season. A lot of our footballers move to the wrestling team when the, the seasons change. We had some amazing matches and I was able to see a few. So that was fantastic. I love it when we're able to host events here. I think it really is a, is a great way for the community to come together and the, the, not just the school community, but the, the city as well. So this was something fantastic to see. Also soccer, we've had a good number of home games recently. I was able to see a few as well. And they've been doing well this season so far. Is it preseason, Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Yeah, so preseason games, I believe they've, they're 2-2 at the moment. So I'm looking forward to seeing how they perform once we get into season. Performing arts showcase, the choir, band, orchestra, and theater of the high school was able to go over to BVMS just last week to put on some performances for the students there in the hopes of wrangling them for our programs in the future. While the attendance to the performances was not as high as we'd hoped or had in the past, it was still great to be able to go and, and see all the, the middle school students and let them see us. And I, I hope that that will, will increase their, their participation in the future. Here are some more pictures from that. On the right there, you can see that is our comedy sports team showing off what they do. And that's sort of a subset of our theater program. So a lot of our theater students get involved with that and they compete with other schools in a league, a local league. Onto the blood drive, the high school ASB and the UCLA Blood and Platelet Center were able to put on a blood drive this year. It's something that is a pretty constant fixture in the past, but we had to skip last year for obvious reasons. So it was great to get this program back on track. We had an extremely successful donation. We, the UCLA Blood and Platelet Center said it was one of the most organized blood donation drives that they'd done at a school for some time and the most organized that we've had at Beverly with them. I believe they were able to get about 90 pints of blood. So that's, or so that's very good. We were aiming for around 100, so 90 is great. We actually had to end early. So in the future, we're hoping to do another donation drive with them in the spring where we may even end up splitting it into two days to ensure that everyone who wants to donate can. Here are some more pictures. There on the left is the ASB president, Aidan Dionne. On the right is me. We both have our UCLA shirts on because we volunteered afterwards, but we were there bright and early at 8:00 AM donating. There on the right is Mr. Mead donating, on the left is Senior Will Judd. So it was very well-attended, very well-run. And so, yeah, it was a great event to have. Of course, Albion Street, this is, has been a tradition running for an extremely long time where members of the high school go over to Albion Street Elementary to give holiday gifts to them and spend the day with the elementary school students. So that was a lot of fun. On the left, you can see students having a lot of fun playing helicopter with the elementary students. And I had, I was able to attend and had a fantastic time reliving elementary school days when I had recess and able to play recess games with them and also some of my other friends when they went off to lunch. So there on the left playing a game, on the bottom right, the choir performed carols for them. The, the students rotated through stations by grade between going into their auditorium to receive gifts or visiting the band in which the drum line was present or the robotics team, which showed off the robot, which I've got some more pictures. So top left, our ASB president, Aidan Dionne, dressed up as Santa and read stories to the kids before they received their gifts. This was all done through service learning, so a big shout out to them and to Ms. Kessel for, for being the, the major organizers. See, on the left, you can see some of our high school students getting very into a game of volleyball. I know that that was a lot of fun for them. The middle, robotics, and then on the right, also a, a game of basketball. Robotics was great. I think we let the, the kids race the robot. We were able to shoot some of the, the foam balls and have them catch it and, and have them roll the balls to load the robot. So this is our robot from two years ago. So it's great to see it still working and we're able to, to, to show it off to them. And for the future, these are actually rapidly approaching. First of all, the orchestra concert will be this Thursday, December 9th at 7:00 PM in the Ron Brown Auditorium at Horace Mann School. Both the chamber orchestra and the concert orchestras will be performing as well as some members of the band program will be joining the chamber orchestra to form a full orchestra. So that's going to be great. I'll be in that as well, so I hope to see some of you there. Interestingly enough, some of the, were playing Waltz of the Flowers, which was one of the, the portions of Nutcracker Medley that the BVMS students played here today. So I'm hoping that some of them will be able to attend as well to see just how great the high school band and orchestra are and hopefully retain them in the programs in the future because I'd love to see them participate. And also on Friday, the vocal music program will have their winter concert on Friday, the 10th at 7:00 PM, $5 admission at the Lutheran Church of the Master. So I will be in attendance. I have many friends in choir, so I'm hoping to see some of you there as well. BVMS news. We're jumping straight into future events. Basketball tryouts will be 3:30 on December 6th, 7th, and 8th. So that was yesterday, today, and tomorrow for the different grade levels at 3:30 and meeting at the basketball court. I love that we have a middle school athletics program that is as fully fledged as this. I, I think it's, it's really a benefit to our high school programs as well and to the middle school students, giving them the opportunity to learn skills in teamwork and, and get active. Winter concerts. So this is going to be their choir. The choir concert is on December 15th at 6:30 in the BVMS auditorium. That's next Wednesday. I, I also believe that the band and orchestra are having concerts next Wednesday or in the near future, or not next Wednesday, next week or in the near future. So I did not have a flyer for those, but I, I also hope to attend. And ugly sweater day. BVMS is having an ugly sweater day Tuesday, December 21st, which is actually kind of funny because the high school is having an ugly sweater day, I believe, this Thursday. So pull out your ugly sweater. I have an ugly Hanukkah sweater that says "Live, Laugh, Lata" on it. I know Hanukkah passed, but I'm going to pull it out anyway.
It's still ugly.
Yeah, exactly. And then Hawthorne news. In the past, the book fair started Monday. So here are some students in the book fair. I remember at Elrod Day, the book fair was always something I looked forward to every year. I always got way too many books and only ended up reading about three of them. But it's still a, a great event and, and getting students excited and interested in reading is always fantastic. Spirit week. So at Hawthorne, they are having a spirit week. And here pictured is mismatch day. So look at the, the shoes of the students in these three pictures. They each have different shoes on for that mismatch day. Counting. So this is Mr. Wheeler working with some of our kindergartners on their counting skills. I actually remember like using almost these exact blocks for, for learning base 10 and learning counting and such. So a very important skill that'll stay with them for a while. So fantastic to see them starting or developing the skills further. Thanksgiving, the TK students dressed up for Thanksgiving. So that's very cute. Some of the fifth grade classes had a friendship feast for Thanksgiving. You can see pumpkin pie, always one of my favorites. And the alma mater. I did not know that Hawthorne had an alma mater, but the first grade students are learning it in these pictures. So that'll, that'll help to build a, a stronger sense of school community. I know the high school has one, but it's great to see that also being extended and giving each of the other school sites their own identity. And news for the district. PTA council is putting on a toy drive currently that is district-wide. This flyer is, I believe, high school-specific, but each school site has their own drop-off point. The high schools is outside of the book room. And at the other schools, I'm unsure where they are, but I'm sure that they're, they're easily accessible and easy to find. So please bring toys and donate and help bring joy to some families who are less fortunate than we are. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Well, thank you. Mrs. Wells, comment?
No comments, but again, other than just a thank.
Thank you again, Eli, for your wonderful updates.
Mr. Halimi.
One, it was great to see you take responsibility at, from the very beginning about the sound issue last time. That's a sign of a great leader, so thanks for that. We have, we have a comedy league? Is that what you were saying? How does that work?
So they'll play games that are, are like improv games. So I've seen them play one called What You Got, where they come up with a dance move and then like essentially for an action and then they, they pass it back and forth to see who can go the longest thinking of an action and coming up with a movement to match what they're doing. And that, that'll go back and forth until the, the judges decide that one team has won or one has failed to produce a move that matches the action that they're describing. So they, they've got a couple of other events like that. But yeah, lots of improv games and they, they compete against other schools.
Very cool. I got to check that out. Also very cool to see that we're still doing up at Albion Street after all these years. I remember, I remember up at participating. Awesome, thank you, Eli.
Of course.
Dr. Stern.
Thank you, Mr. Raymer. I was really happy to see how you really show how much our school offers, you know, in a very balanced way. So not only are there amazing sports offerings and of course, some outstanding athletes as we learned about tonight, but there's also an incredible set of musicians. And there's actors and there's people who sing in the choir and there's comedy. And I think that, you know, even though we care very much about academic achievement, it's really nice to know that we have these wonderful extracurricular or, or clubs or things that, that kids can really get engaged with. So thank you for showcasing that.
Of course.
Mr. Margot.
Nope, thank you. I know some of us are going to be judging the science fair tomorrow at BV. And we also have the, the media, the, the music center is opening tomorrow, which we can't go at because there's a conflict, but I'm really excited about that because that's my jam and I wish I could be there. But so many wonderful things happening for our students, it's terrific. Thank you for reporting.
I think Horace Mann is also having some kind of a program tomorrow night, a winter sing or something with snow coming out from somewhere. So there's a lot going on.
Okay, don't say that with Wade around.
Couple of things I wanted to mention. I was taking notice that the blood drive was probably in one of the new classrooms or one of the new areas at B1 or B2. And I loved that it was on display for everybody to see how great that room looked. It was really quite, quite nice. I, I would like to take just a second to talk about something that's called the pathways in our district and something that we are missing that I would love to have, know that someday we can bring it back, someday. Not tomorrow, not the next week, or maybe not the next year. But I remember when our elementary grade kids would learn instrument playing in the lower grades and then could be able to feed into the middle school and then go on to the high school. And I think we don't have that option for the kids right now anymore in the lower grades where they could perhaps start. And I'm not saying there may be something that someday, but I, I think that we could maybe increase the number of kids who are in orchestra and band if we could generate that interest in the lower grades. And, and that's just a thought that I had because I was trying to tie in what we saw tonight with the pathways that we. with the pathways that we talk about so much. So it's just a thought that I had. And again, Mr. Raymer, thank you for your very comprehensive report. I always look forward to it.
Of course.
Thank you again.
Thank you for pointing out that the blood drive was held in the media center. It was actually the perfect space for it. They had a couple of little like independent work areas on the side that were perfect for health check ins for each of the donors with their and because that is a relatively private matter, it was they were able to set it up extremely well about the ribbon cutting at the Music Industry Center. I I will be there tomorrow afternoon, so I'm very excited to see everything that they're doing over there. And in regards to the pathways at the the elementary school, I remember that in fifth grade I was able to to join orchestra, where I was able to pick between choir and orchestra and I played cello for the year. I will say I very much did not enjoy the cello, which is why I switched to band, but still having the opportunity to to do so was great even was one day a week. So I I would also like to to see something like that implemented in the future.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to have a report from the bond manager, Mr. Don Blake.
Do you share your screen? Dr. Brigay? It's that one, okay.
We can, we can get.
Dr. Brigay, members of the board, this is an update of the current projects that are under construction. We'll start with the Horace Mann Elementary School. Currently, the restroom upgrades and the new touchless water bottle filter project is complete and we're in the process of closing out DSA. Requirements is probably hard to see here, but installing these units required us to do some construction to provide for ADA access to these units. Beverly Vista Middle School restroom upgrades with new PE lockers and new touchless water bottle filters. Contractual work is complete. And we also have staff parking adjacent sidewalk and curb work, which is mostly an ADA issue. Pending formal approval from the city, we're anticipating that by the end of this week for approval. It's been with them quite a while. And the work is projected to start on the twenty second of December and completed by the twenty third of January. There's a building E is a new HVAC system for the NPR. The boys and girls locker room, it includes the NPR and the boys and girls locker room. It is complete, the system is functional and commissioning is in progress. I'm not seem to get this thing going to the next slide. Let's see here. Beverly Vista Middle School, this is a picture. I'm not sure how well you can see this, but this is the picture of the new PE lockers. What you see here is the new HVAC system for the NPR area and for the locker rooms as well. Now we'll move to Elrodale. And each, what I have here for you is a little bit of information on each of the buildings. The building A auditorium, custom rigging is in manufacture production. It's kind of important for us that's a long lead item. Roughen walls and ceilings is beginning and in progress. Layout opening at Fan Room one oh six. There's a lot of work involved in that, so it's almost a separate schedule. Working on the stage roof, working on the floor assembly, metal stud framing and drywall at walls. So what you can see here is the architecture. This is building A. This would be when we say framing. This is the extent currently of the arched ceiling framing in building A auditorium. And what you see, it looks like a floor, is actually not a floor. That's what we call a dance floor, meaning this is a scaffold with this wood across it that creates a working area. So this is actually up very close to the top of the ceiling. And then as we complete the work and we complete the work, we've dropped down each of the stages of the scaffold and then we finally get to the bottom. Hopefully, they'll all be clean at the top as we come down. The subfloor framing of building A, this is quite a quite an event. We had a lot of change orders, not, excuse me, cha- construction change documents. These are DSA items that once we did the demo, we uncovered more work that we had to do to create this particular subfloor. So this is just a picture of that work. Okay. Building B, we're working on the dormers on the roof and chipping out concrete for plumbing. At restrooms one hundred, one oh, one six X A. Exterior wall repair. Stucco, this is very glad we're getting into this part of the exterior of the building. We're working on the roofs, metal stud framing and insulation at the walls. So you can see here the new roof work on building B. This is sheeting that goes. We've we've removed the tile and we'll be putting back tile that was actually manufactured with the same company that built the tile that was installed originally, as it is with B one, B two, B three, B four and Elrodale's the same, same tile company. Building C, roughen walls and ceilings, roughen plumbing and restroom walls, installing hot water heaters is a big deal for us as we're building walls. Completing the roughen is where we begin to really pick up our our time on schedule. Installing the piping and duct work, the layout for hangers, installing mainline branches. This all has to do with what we call MEP roughen. We're installing door frames, metal stud framing and and drywall at walls, installing countertop supports, exterior wall repair of stucco. So this is a corridor in building C in the second floor. This is a door frame insulation. And building C at the second floor, this is quite a big door, a very large door. Building D, same thing, roughen in walls and ceilings. Rough plumbing in the restroom walls, installing pipe and duct roughen, framing and drywall first floor and second floor. Working on what we call sister studs for sinks, first and second floor. Layout hangers and installing mainline branch lines. This is MEP applications, installing door frames and chipping up concrete in the basement. So you see here, building D, corridor framing. By the time we get to this, this for us, you can see the sheetrock is installed on both sides of the corridor and the ceiling is the last thing to frame out and we'll be moving through these buildings fairly quickly. Again, same application here, drywall insulation in the basement. It's on most of the walls, the door frames are in, the roughens in. Building E, install countertop supports and steel for HVAC. Rough plumbing in the restroom walls, roof work processing with new clay tiles. We'll be ready to play shortly. So you can see on the top of the roof of building E, this is the red tile. It's stacked on the roof. We call loaded. We've loaded the roof. For MEP, MEP means mechanical, electrical and plumbing. So what you see here in the above ceiling area is what we call the roughen. That's the the material that is the trunk area, trunk portion of the work that goes first. We build the walls, put the drywall in and then we are ready to put in the drops in those areas. Drywall and door frames and building A first floor, it is actually taped out. This is a field area. Underground utility is now being put into place with proper grading. Pretty excited about that. Site demo. This is part of our project acceleration piece. We removed the portables and made room for this exterior site demo. So we're doing demo, exterior work, work on the roof, roof and interior, all simultaneously. So our efforts are to complete work and initiate what we call early start work as soon as possible and keep all work and all building. I think you can see we're working in all buildings at all at once. We're not doing one building, then the next building. Entire site is being done simultaneously. This is just what we call phase two. This was the area around building E. Okay, now I'm at the high school. High school building one and building B one and B two. It is now occupied. Our audit is confirmed four million, five hundred and sixty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty eight dollars and eighty two cents and cost savings to the district at the completion of that first project phase. Furniture selection for the ASB room and at B one, B two is in process. And this will be the last furniture purchase with bond funds for B one, B two. This one, boy, I wish I could, this is a link here. I don't want to read all this here, but essentially what this says is the audience chamber, first floor lobby, second floor lobby, basement under stage, stage, tower, exterior and roof. You'll kind of see if you kind of skim this, these things called CCDs. And CCDs are chain, construction change documents. They're actually like mini drawings. And so each of these areas is where we have normally we would expect on the entire project, maybe half a dozen cha- construction change documents. I think we're about three hundred and fifty just in this building. So what you see here is all of the work we're working on is work that was uncovered when we did our demo and we did our hazmat portion. And so these are all things that we're we're working on and completing outside of the original documents, and that's why they're called CCDs. It's a DSA term for a document that requires DSA to approve. That's probably probably more information than you needed, but it's a lot of work, a a lot of work simultaneous. Again, B three, first floor lobbies, concrete strap, slab and metal decking. This was a big, big success for us. A lot's involved in putting in a brand new deck and pouring the concrete. It means we can now work above that concrete. Stage and basement, new concrete steps and landings. This opens up more work. This is areas to work on both sides of the walls of each, each sides of these corridors and the steps. Okay, B three auditorium. This is in the chamber and stage. It's kind of what you see here. At the very top, these looks like framing for roof. And then all the rest of this scaffolding is what we call, again, a dance floor. So we create and build all of this scaffolding, create a floor and then work at the very highest. So the work area is up in the attic space and then we work down. B three, new roofing underlayment, clay tiles and sheet metal gutters. Again, here's the same thing. This is instrument music room, salt or theater, coral room, classrooms and work areas, the first floor, the stage storage workshop, second floor classrooms, exterior, all are involved in change, construction change documents that we're working through. And so that's the majority of the activity in these particular areas. This is just a highlight of that particular work. B four, second floor, costume, IT study and restrooms, wood blocking miscellaneous utilities. There's open, we've been able to open up all these areas and begin to get good production in the framing of these particular spaces. This is where we're picking up really good time on our schedule. B four, new roof underlayment, plywood, clay tiles and sheet metal gutters at the dormers. As you can see, that's about about a third completed as of this this month. First floor lobby, slab deck placement. Again, whenever we're able to put in a floor, a new floor, pour concrete, it creates areas for work for walls and everything above. It's key to our critical path. Stage basement, concrete placement and stairs, similar. It's just very tight and very labor intensive to, we have a lot of corridors and a lot of stairwells. Okay, now we're into what we call the Amendment Eight Utilities and Access. Essentially, this is the work that we call the modernization of the underground and the site utilities for the high school. So what, here is the scope, what we're called the mega trench. This is utilities that will go down Heath Road from the entrance to the property down to about where building H used to be. It's very large, has all of the main storm lines, sewer lines, water lines, fire lines and electrical and data. We also now show you a drawing here at the end, temp power. The temp power will go to the swim gym and provide also temporary lighting. Demo of a ramp, the reason, I'll show you on the map, on the map why that has to happen and be integrated. This, this is actually quite complicated because we'll be trenching various trenches throughout the, throughout the site. And for example with, and I'll get into the safety program that's planned for Marino. So this is, seems like a simple scope, but it's, it's quite involved in coordination intense. So safety, these are just some of the things in all phases because we will be on Heath Road and the contractor will need to fence it and provide different access points as we come up Heath Road. So this is a concept. These are all the things that we are involved in planning for for safety. For the temp power to the swim gym, again, we we itemize and as part of our schedule and we capture. Safety is more involved in this because we are outside and in between the movement and access of students and and staff. So we have a demo of an ADA ramp that would be currently on the north side of the tennis court. Okay. Logistics for this particular work is involves not just trenching, but involves coordinating because there's, we 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 touch. We touch Heath, we touch Olympic, we touch, touch Marino, flagmen, access, security, very, this is a highly controlled schedule. Now I don't know if you can see this. I'm not sure if everyone can can see the detail here. Can, can everyone see this okay? Okay. What you see colors, maybe this is easier. An area that you see this An area that you see this orange coloring, these lines, I'm running with my mouse. These are the new underground. So we come up Heath, we come down through the green, you'll see the green area. And we've worked this out so that we don't disturb the tennis court in this phase. So we run all the utilities down and come up behind the swim gym and then provide temporary underground services for Conheim and for the swim gym. What you see here is the future footprint and location for building C and this, and the pool. Okay. M and O facility, these are some other projects that we are involved with and cooperation with the M and O department. For the M and O facility relocation, relocating modular buildings to the high school from El Rodeo to begin January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. High school village disconnect, approximately nineteen modular buildings and restrooms have been disconnected. The contents have been disassembled and removed. Third-party coordination for building removals in process. Physical building removal will be completed during winter recess. And that's, that's the end.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blake. Very comprehensive, very complete report of what's happening. And I'm sure that everybody on the board might, might want to make a comment. So we'll start with Mrs. Wells.
Well, thank you so much for that comprehensive report. It's really nice to see all the work that's being done. And I myself have been at the schools for the school tours. And I just would also like to say that to pro us that the work just looks really wonderful and really excited to see it when it's completed.
Mr. Ray.
I agree with Mrs. Wells. Thank you very much for the report. I'm hoping to see more of them in the future. It's just great to get an update on all the progress that's been made. So thank you.
Mr. Halili.
Same here. Thank you so much for, to being here tonight, Padon. And appreciate the time that you took with me this week to help, to bring me up to speed on the history of the program. And, you know, I hope, I hope that we will be getting more kind of regular reports like this. As we've been discussed, I think it's very healthy for the, the relationship that we have ongoing, whether we meet here, whether we get updates one-on-one when we have them. I just appreciate you making the time and doing this. And also, we're, I, I, I won't speak for the whole board, but you know, I'm very supportive of the program. Very much looking forward to continuing and getting it done. And so please, as Ms. Wells said, please pass along our thanks to the contractors, all the teams that are working on this. To program, we appreciate it and look forward to continuing the progress. Thanks.
Dr. Stern.
Mr. Blake, thank you so much for the report. I also want to say that we can't underestimate just how difficult your job is. I mean, when you think about all the elements that go into it, you're managing personnel. You're managing all sorts of construction projects. There's, there's technology issues, there's legals, legal issues. And also you had a pandemic where there was a delay in the, what is it called, the shipping, what are they calling it, the shipping? Yeah, logistics, supply chain, sorry. Yeah, I mean, can't underestimate that. I know the costs of steel has skyrocketed. I mean, I just think that, that what you have delivered, given those huge obstacles and all of the moving parts is really impressive. So thank you.
Mr. Margul.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. I'll echo my colleagues' support of yourself. Your staff is amazing, your program. I know it's not you going out to get those photos. So thank you who's ever capturing all that in, in almost real time. And I, and I assume this report will be on posted.
Yes, I mean, it is live and posted.
Right, so people can take a look at the progress and understand how much is involved in the program, the nuances at each site. It's complicated and there's a lot going on on a daily basis. So thank you very much, Mr. Blake.
And I will echo everything that my colleagues have said. I continually to be amazed at the complications and the, all the pieces of this unbelievable amount of work. And the fact that it's proceeding is amazing. And I'm looking forward to seeing future presentations where there's, we can see more completions of the projects. So thank you again, Mr. Blake. I appreciate your time this evening.
My pleasure.
Okay, moving right along. We now will be receiving a report from Student Services, from Assistant Superintendent of Educational, of Student Services, Mrs. Chisholm.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Good evening, board. Dr. Bregy, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here, have some exciting things to share with you. You got to see the check-in, checkout process for our PBIS. Program earlier, how come it's not letting me in? Does it turn my camera? Just here? No?
Go here. And then we go here. This one?
Yep.
Yeah?
Nope, 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 that one. Yeah, I got that one, that one.
That one?
Sorry, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
There it is. Thank you. Sorry about that. As I was saying, you got to see our check-in, checkout process earlier. I'm going to talk a little bit more about it and go ahead and get started. So our department, I'm going to do a little bit of background. I know I haven't had a chance to meet Mr. Halili, so I want to give some reference. Hi, nice to meet you. Just so you kind of know who we are and what we do. So Student Services has a broad area of responsibility. We have all these areas that we cover. Each one is its own separate thing. And I have an amazing staff that helps support that work. So here's who works in the department. There are four administrators, myself and three coordinators, Mrs. Jean McCray, Dr. Angela Lawyer, Mr. Phil Wanker. And then we have our support staff, Ms. Davis, Jeannie Davis, Maria Fernandez and Carla Subara. So we're, we're a team of six, or sorry, seven, can't add, that does all that work for the district. So the first piece I want to talk to you tonight is about special education. That's one of our most, one of the largest programs in the department and has a lot of financial implications for the district. And what are we doing over there? Just a little bit of stuff. I couldn't, I couldn't think of how to display it for you because there are so many things. And you think of one thing and then you add another. But these are, these are parts of, part, some of the things that we do. The thing that I'm, that I want to highlight and I think where we start is always we talk about instruction and support for students. So post configuration, we were able to, and through configuration, we were able to implement a full continuum of placement options for our students in district. What does that mean? That's special at ease. What, what am I saying? We are able to support our students' special education needs in districts, in district. We are no longer sending them out to other districts, other schools, other places, except for students who, who would traditionally not be able to be supported on a comprehensive campus regardless. We have contracts with schools that we call non-public schools. Those are for students that have either behavioral difficulties or severe learning challenges that are, that we can't support within district. But I would like to just kind of give some historical information. When I arrived in the district in 2017, we had almost thirty placements of those types of placements outside of the district. We are down to eleven. And we, that means that we have brought our students back and we are no longer sending them out unless we really need to. Now, if we need to, we do, but we are, we are managing it in district. One thing I want to highlight is our CEC program. It is at the middle school and the high school. That's our counseling and rich program that supports students who have, who are academically intact. They're, they're on grade level, their reading, their math, their writing is grade level. But they have some behavioral challenges that keep them from accessing the curriculum on a daily basis or their educational program. We have two amazing teachers that teach those programs, like I mentioned, one at the middle school, one at the, at the high school. And our students then are also able to still participate in the extracurricular activities and attend their neighborhood school with their peers. So that's a wonderful piece. And before this, so those would be some of the students that we would send to other programs outside of the district at a cost, not only monetarily, but to the, to the detriment of the student. They were no longer invited to birthday parties or, or outside events because they were not part of the peer group because they were on a bus, maybe going to school thirty minutes, forty minutes one way away from their, from their community. So I'm very happy about that. Another thing that we implemented is direct instruction intervention in reading and math. So this is direct instruction, teaching our students, filling in the gaps in their learning in reading, such as reading comprehension, phonemic awareness, in their math, their calculation skills, to help move them along and, and get them closer to grade level so that they can then exit special education and return to general education. This is our second full year of implementation and we are tracking the data and our students are doing very well. I have done this in other districts. It was a four-year study that we actually did with the University of Oregon. And we started with our students in sixth grade and by tenth grade, we had a ninety percent exit rate to, from special education into general education. So a lot of times it's just, it's not that the students don't have the ability. They haven't been taught or they haven't had those gaps in their knowledge addressed. So that's what we're doing there. So many things on this screen. Protocols and procedures, those are things that you always had to have in place to make sure that, because the other piece of special education is compliance. And the state watches everything, you know, are we doing our IEPs on time? Are we, are we providing the things, the supports and services that we say we're going to provide? In Progress is a brand-new policy and procedural manual. It's about seven inches thick. I'm sure that staff is really looking forward to getting that. But through, in there, we talk about things such as the next bullet, our new procedures for how we conduct triennial and annual assessments. So we have a standardized process across the district now that assessment at the elementary school looks the same as, as an assessment, a triennial, triennial assessment at the high school. It's important so that we don't lose things or misstep so that we are, are not found not compliant by the state for certain procedures that were required to follow by law. The other thing, this, other things that we've implemented are things like bi-weekly special education team meetings at sites. So that means that the whole team at the site, the school psychologist, the speech and language pathologist, the administrator, usually it's the, one of the assistant principals at the site who manages the special education team, the teachers all meet together and discuss students and teach, and their interventions and their programs and prepare for upcoming IEP meetings so that we are prepared to present a, a quality document and information to our parents. Got to highlight a couple other things, our adult transition, transition program, our weekend work program. That's part of a grant from the Department of Rehab. And what we do with that is we take our students who are in our prime program at, at the high school and we have them receive job training and we actually place them in jobs within the community and they're paid to do it. The grant pays their salary and the business gets the, the, the person to work in their business. So it's, it's a good partnership. We actually, right before COVID, expanded that to our, to our mild moderate students. And we were able to place between fifteen to twenty students per year using the grant monies. Our preschool program, which is located at Hawthorne Elementary, it's, we've, we revamped our program this year to include early birds and late birds. Now, these are all students who are in preschool. They haven't had any intervention. They may have speech and language delays. Typically, we were able to serve between eight to ten students. By making that change, we are now serving sixteen students with three more students pending. So we're, we're almost doubling the amount of kids that we can support. We have a brand-new teacher there who's doing an amazing job. And if you have time, that's one of my favorite classes to go in because they're adorable. What else? What else can we talk about? Our instructional assistants. Okay, I have a couple of examples for you as well. Our instructional assistants, we have currently fifty-six in the district. We established a position control, internal position control document so that we know who is in what class at every, at all times, who's supporting what student. As a one-on-one, this is a sample of that document. Of course, I had to take out the names because we have, we have students' information in there. But this is an internal document that is shared within our department. So we can know their hours, who they're supporting, what class, what program, and what student at a glance. It's updated on a weekly basis. So this is a live Google Doc that we maintain. I'd like to go back one screen to show you this. This is just a sample of the programming that we have. This is what I was talking about, the continuum of placement options by site and teacher. We also share this with our parents at IEP meetings when they are coming in new to special education so that they can understand what we have available. So this is the whole continuum here. I talked a little bit about preschool. Prime is for our students who are in our mod severe programs. We do a great job in also having our students in all of our special education classes participate both academically and socially in general education as appropriate based on their skill set. So, you know, just because you're in special education doesn't mean you stay there all day. You go to specials. If you, if you have a strength in math, you go to math. You, you do those types of things. So it's, we have a good, we have a good array of support and services available for our students. If you look at, if you look at the graph, the pie graph, this kind of tells you where the majority of our students are. So the majority of our students are in what we call resource, meaning that they're in general education more than half of the day. So even though they have an IEP, they're in their regular math class, they're in their regular English class, things like that, maybe with support or, or co-taught class that also supports that area. Then we break it down. We have about twenty-six percent, I'll round up, of our students who spend the majority of their day in special education. So that's fifty percent or more. So they have one teacher who teaches them multiple subjects. Then we have our prime, I'm sorry, we have our prime, our prime program where our students are there all day. And those are for our students with intellectual disabilities or multiple disabilities. And then if you see here, we have about three percent of our students who are outside of the district in other programs, non-public school or residential. We currently have about four hundred and sixty-five students in special education in the district. And we have about thirty pending for assessment. So, and this is, I want to go back to this screen. All these things kind of apply to all the programs that you're seeing. It's happening simultaneously. There are teams at every site. There are administrators at every site and then the district administrators who support them. So it's kind of a, a rolling, a, a, a machine that's working with different parts simultaneously. What else I want to talk about? Training. We've, we're continuing, we always are training our staff, providing updates on legal information or new cases that come out that, that guide our practice. We do a lot of cross-training before COVID. And now again, we are cross-training both our speech pathologist and our occupational therapist and our, and our adaptive PE teacher, how to co-treat or, or work together. So students are not missing service, missing class because they're being pulled out from multiple services. Sometimes the speech and LT go together and then that's one time instead of two times. So things like that. All right. I will move on because I can talk about that all day. All right, so social emotional learning. We've been talking a lot about this. I know that several board members have talked about the need for social emotional learning, wanting to know what we're doing for our students, particularly coming back to in-person instruction after the pandemic. You know, recently John Hopkins University of Education found that a significant, significant, statistically significant and consistent relationship between social emotional learning or social emotional school, skills and the students' academic outcomes. We know this. We know that when kids don't feel that they're part of their school community, when they don't feel supported, when they don't feel that they have a reason to want to go to school, they don't do well in school. When they don't feel that they have a reason to want to go to school, they don't do well in school. Um, so why, why do we need to have these, please, uh, the support in place and what are we doing? So, um, the main thing for us is, you know. It's, it says eighteen months, but we're going on two years, basically. We're dealing with COVID and having disrupted, disrupted in learning. And it, even though we say we're back, it's still not normal. Our kids are still trying to figure out. How to navigate their sites. So I wanted to give you a, a overview of what we're doing at the sites. And what we're doing at district level so that you know, have awareness of what's happening and then we can talk about, uh, what we want to do i- in the future. Um, these are some of the reasons why we need to do it. I mean, we're seeing it every day. We're, we're seeing stress in our students. We're seeing trauma. You know, we're having more office visits just for kids who. They're not, they're not acting out, but they just don't know how to be in school or they're nervous or they have anxiety or. They have a new peer group and they don't know how to interact with them. Um, so the first thing we did and that you approved was is part of our ed- ed- edgenuity, um. Curriculum. It's called Purpose Prep. So it's embedded in that curriculum. They have actual social emotional learning content. They have lessons, they have. Overall areas that they look at. So some of them are solutions and behavior or ways to increase student success. Um, some of the sample courses are these things, mental health and wellness, personal development, character and leadership. Here are some of the lesson topics. Our teachers and our counselors have access to all of these. And then I'm gonna share with you in a few minutes how they're utilizing them at different sites. So this is something that we purchased, um. As we were coming out, coming back to, um, hybrid learning so that we had support and information. There for the teachers and the administrators to provide. So what are we doing? At the elementary level. Um, in addition to, so weekly, our, our PBIS coordinator, um, Angela Lawyer. Sends out weekly lessons to the sites and the site administrators. But in addition to those, they usually take those and they look at them and say, how does this apply to our students? So for example, Mr. Waddell, who's a counselor at, um, Hawthorne, these are some of the things he's doing. Um, you know, I've, I've, I've seen him do his lunch bunch, you know, where he helps students work through common issues. This can be something as on the playground, how to share the ball, how to, how to start, um, a game, how to interject yourself into a game, say, hey, can I play with you? Um, he, he talks about, um, he did, he teaches lessons in different classes every week in different grade levels. Um, and he talks about things like conflict resolution, self-worth. Um, he's, uh, he's there constantly supporting them. Um, also, our teach, our element, um, and in addition to Mr. Waddell, our school psychologist. Mrs. Zari- Zari poor, um, teaches various skill, uh, social skills groups. So she pulls kids from their classes and teaches social skills and it's both students with, in special education and general education. But it's talking about different things like how do you communicate? How do you tell someone that they made you angry? How do you tell someone that you, that? Um, you know, you want to be their friend. How do you, how do you tell someone, you know, you're in my space? How do you, how do you communicate these things without acting out? Um, it's, these things are all in, in supportive there. They also have Friendship Fridays. Team buildings, uh, Team Building Tuesdays and Busy Bees. So I think even some of the pictures that we're seeing sometimes from Hawthorne and, um. Are, are some of these groups that are happening. So there, there's support that's happening there. Um, at Horace Mann, we have a district-wide, um, behaviorist. And every week she conducts visits to the classroom and provides lessons and tools. Um, there are calm-down kits that were developed by the PBIS team that have things like fidgets. Um, little weighted vests that help kids who maybe can't stay in their seat to help them sit down. Um, um, anything that will help a kid, uh, little timers where you can watch the sand. Anything that can help a kid that maybe experience some, experiencing some anxiety or some behavioral difficulty in the classroom. Um, they can do that. And these were purchased for every classroom there. Um, they have the online lessons, they have online videos, um, they infuse those things into their weekly assemblies. Um, and then they also do yoga during PE. Um, secondary level, looks a little different, but there are things going on there as well. Um, we have the counselors providing both SEL and crisis counseling. Um, our counselors do an excellent job with that and so do our school psychologists. Um, we've actually had students who have been in crisis and have had to have, um, outside support call for them. And the amount of support that our students are receiving is, is outstanding. I mean, you have someone there doing therapy with them, you have their teacher, you have the site administrator. And they stay with them until they're able to, um, either go home or get support and, and possibly go. Uh, to a hospital or something. Um, you have, we have a bulldog buddies, we have mentoring programs. Where they pair a sixth grader and an eighth grader together so that they can help them learn the school. Um, and then the Bulldog Buddies is basically for new students on a case-by-case basis. They give them a student who's there, who's been there to kind of show them the campus. You know, where to go, where's the, where is the cafeteria, where's the office, where's the locker room, things like that. Um, in addition, we also have Norman Aid at the middle school now. It used to only be at the high school. And they do monthly topics that, they have monthly topics that they focus on and we have a few listed there. Um, you know, August was transition back to school. That was a great one. December, we're talking about stress management. That happens around the holidays, you know, what happens if you want the certain, to buy a certain gift and you can't do that. Or you didn't get the gift you wanted. How does that work? Um, at the high school, we have Norman Aid tools and we've, we've collaborated now with the Norman Aid Center. So they are doing weekly SEL lessons in PE. And there's also a podcast for ninth and tenth grade students regarding, uh, SEL. Um, they also have free access to the Maple Counseling, uh, via the Maple Counseling Center, which I forgot to mention is also at the middle school as well now. Um, and then the new center design is, is designed to help reduce stress and support. Some more, uh, social emotional learning, things like the music, the lighting, the way that the desks are set up. Um, and, and you have, uh, instruction broken up into fifteen-minute intervals to help provide them breaks as needed. So those are, uh, a lot of the ways that we are addressing SEL across the district. Um, PBIS and bullying intervention. I'm gonna go through this one a little quicker because you actually had a, um. Good sample of what's happening earlier today at the high school. Um, I just was, do want to remind the, the board that we are one of the few districts in California. That are implementing PBIS at the high school level. Um, it's very common at elementary and middle school, but not so much at the high school. And we're implementing it and implementing it well. Um, these are our goals, uh, for PBIS district-wide. Um, the main thing that I want to point out or focus on here is the first point. This information is actually required by ed code. And it is, it is monitored on our dashboard by the California Department of Education. So before you discipline a student, you have to provide what, what they call other means of correction. So have you tried to teach them? Have you tried to, um, to? Before, before you exclude them from instruction, have you done other things? Have you, have you ment- mentored them? Have you counseled them? Have you shown them? Have you, have you met with the parents? Have you done all the other things before excluding them from instruction? So that one is huge. Um, it is actually, like I said, part of ed code and for certain violations, if you have not done these things. You are actually precluded from suspending a student. So it's very important. Um, our site administrators are, are doing a great job with this. It, it is a change that happened kind of quietly in the law, but it's something that, uh, that is being monitored very closely. Um, these are our, our core values by site. Um, I love how each school kind of has their own spin on it. But if you notice, there, there are certain connect, certain things that are, um. Connected through, like you see respect on several of them. Um, but it's, it's also, they're also age-appropriate. So we have Hawthorne and, uh, Horace Mann at the bottom and the high school and BVMS on the top. Um, so let's talk a little bit about. Oh wait, okay, yeah, that's where I want to go. How we know it's working? So when we did our district update for the strategic plan, we talked about this data here. So twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was our first year of implementation. So yes, Mrs. Marcus, you were right. We've been doing it for approximately three years. So if you look at these numbers, sorry, if you look at the first column of numbers. Look at the total number, these are, these are suspensions across the district by site. This is pre-PBIS. If you look at nineteen twenty. We're heading in the right direction. So the, the, the percentages are the percentage in decrease in, in suspensions across the district. Then we had home learning. We still were, we still had suspensions doing home learning, believe it or not. Um, but it really was, uh, a different context. And now being back in person, these numbers are as of today. And now I have to, I have to give the disclaimer that it's only semester one. But if you look at it, we, four hundred and seventy-three, three hundred and two to forty-one. We're, we are definitely trending in the right direction. So, um, but I couldn't give you percentages because it wouldn't be fair. It's not apples to apples. But you can see that these things, that the things that we are doing through PBIS and through our, our discipline, uh. Program is working because the suspensions are, are decreasing. How do we know that it's working? The data shows us. We were, we were, uh, recognized by LA County Office of Education. As a bronze district. Every one of our schools received a PBIS bronze award, which is great. This, I mean, it was at the end of our second year of implementation. How, that, how is that measured? That is measured through what's called the TFI or the Tiered Fidelity Inventory. And they look at things like your suspensions, your, your discipline data, your dashboard. All the, and all of the pieces, um, that you, that you as a district indicate that you want to look at. So for year two, these are the things that are on what we call our TFI. So every ti- every team has a, every site has a PBIS team. That's new, that's not new. We've had that since the, since the beginning. But now we're gonna start tracking the data to look at the fidelity of our implementations such as. Okay, Laura had five suspensions in the first semester. Here are the interventions we provided her. How did she do the second semester? We're gonna compare those two things to see how, how we're doing. Um. The, um. The goal is to prevent the behavior before it happens. So that's what we're looking at and that's the data that we're tracking. You saw the check-in, check-out process at the high school. Um, it is also happening at the three other schools. Um. We have some neat things going on, um. With the check-in, check-out process via PBIS and COVID. It's all connected. Our kids who have modified quarantine, we're using this process to check, to check on them, to monitor them. And also reward them for participating in the program and, and following the steps. So coming and checking in, seeing, seeing, seeing the site administrator, knowing where they're supposed to be. They get PBIS rewards. So it's all interconnected. It's, it's teaching the behavior that we're wanting or that we're expecting and rewarding it when we receive it. So, um, that's just a, one example of how it's, how everything is, uh, connected. Um, bullying intervention. What are we doing to prevent bullying intervention, to prevent bullying in our district? Um, we have multiple types of bullying. Um, the four most common ones are listed here. Um, I will say that it's, you know, when, when I was in school and probably most of us in this room, it was the first two columns. Now it's basically the last two columns. It, it, bullying has taken on a new, um. Dimension. Uh, we have social media. We have, uh, technologies. Everyone has a cellphone, you know? I can, I can use an app and send you a message and you don't know who I am, you know, things like that. So these are the things that we're looking at. Um, we are actually having a presentation at our leadership meeting tomorrow with a gentleman who is, um. Uh, an expert in cyberbullying and he comes and does, um, assemblies for school sites. And we're looking at having him come in and do assemblies. He's done one previously at BV, BV, BVMS. Um, but having him come in and talk to our students and our staff, how do you manage this? How do you address this? And, and it's real, you know, somebody, you, some, you may say, oh, it's just a text message or it's just a picture, but it's real for the kids who's, that are receiving it. So it's thing, it, those are things that we have to look at. Um, so, you know, we have, we, we're monitoring hotspots. You know, there are places on every campus that we know that, that need more supervision. So we're there looking, making sure that, that. Uh, kids are not able to, um, mistreat each other. And, and we have to get a little bit, we have to catch up to our students on some of the cyber, on some of the social media things. Cause I'm telling you, some of the things I see, you, you can make an account and it's a ghost account and we can't trace it. And it's not only us, you know, we partner with BHBD and there have been a couple of times where they said, yeah, we don't know either. So it, it is real. It's what we are dealing with and, and we're addressing it. Okay, the last thing I want to talk to you about is child welfare enrollment and attendance. So, um, previously we had a contract with a place called Leclerc Foundation. Uh, for our students who have substance abuse, um, uh, concerns. Um, however, unfortunately, post-COVID, they're not, they're not functioning. So we needed to find someone to help support our students who have these concerns. So this will be something that I'm, uh, bringing to the board on the next meeting to talk about. How we can support our students who have, uh, drug and alcohol, uh, substance abuse concerns. And basically what it is, is a counseling session with a, with a licensed, um, counseling professional who is not part of the district. But is trained to work with students on substance abuse. We're gonna do, we're gonna do five thirty-minute counseling sessions. The parents are involved and they, there's a, there's a curriculum and, and a. And a series of assignments that the students are assigned to do as part of it. And then there's an exit interview to see how they're supporting. This is, this would be, this would be if someone is caught on our campus. With either drugs or alcohol or, or under the influence. Because there's a part of it that's discipline, but there's also a part of, that we have to do some, some restorative practices to support the, to support our students. Because, um, they're coming back to school. So how do we reintegrate them? How do we support them? So this will be something that you'll see on one of the, um, next board meeting agendas. Alright, attendance. So this is a graphic representation of our attendance for the past five years. Yes, we are declining enrollment. So you have your numbers here, go across this number, excuse me. This number is actually, as of today, thirty-one ninety-five is current. That's where we are. Um. We talked about some of the reasons why with, with, uh, Mr. Roach's report last week and our demographic report, we'll talk about it also. But, uh, and I'll touch a little bit on it in a few minutes. What I'm sharing with you here is an actual screenshot of our enrollment database that we maintain in my office. This is updated on a daily basis. Um, it's TK. We, we take care of enrollment and, uh, for TK through eight. The high school has their own team. So it's not, um, it's not all in one place, which is something that I think we, I would like for us to look at. Um, as we go forward and I'll share some, some information why in a little bit. But a- as you can see, we have it broken down by grade. Um, this is per our CBA, how many students can be at that grade level, how many are actually there. Yeah, we, we track transfers, um, and then we have the total and then how many seats are available. So if you come to our office tomorrow to enroll a fifth grader and your home school is Hawthorne. We, we're able to know right away if we can enroll that student there or do, if we need to have, have them go to Horace Mann. Um, this is new. This did not exist. This is something that we developed in my department. Um, what I, what I inherited was. Not organized. It was like, why find the paper and count the marks? Hopefully, hopefully they're all there. So this is something that our whole cabinet team has access to, um, so that we know. At a moment's glance, what's going on with enrollment. This is information that you asked Mr. Roach for, uh, at the last meeting that I actually track. Because the board has been asking for this for some time. So I wanted to share this with you. Um, so that you have this to, um, to inform your, your decision and your discussion, your decisions and your discussions. So what we have are the withdrawals from June of this year through current by site. So we, we ask them, and I'll show you a, a sample, uh, in a little bit. Um, there's an internal document that our office managers have access to by site, again TK through eight only, only, eighth grade only. that when a student is checking out of school, we ask them, where are you going? Private school, another school in Califor, another public school district in California, another school district out of state, are you moving out of country? So, we have thirty students that have left Hawthorne between June twenty-twenty-one and today. Horace Mann, same thing. This is the breakdown TK through five. We have twenty-two students who have left the district between, I'm sorry, yeah, left the district from Horace Mann between June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one and today. Beverly Vista, biggest, the biggest drop is in sixth grade. So, we have a total of eighty-nine. So, in Mr. Roach's report last week, he said that we lost one hundred and forty-nine students. I have data on a hundred and forty-one. That makes me assume that the other eight students are high school students, and I don't have that data because my office doesn't track, doesn't track that because we don't do enrollment for the, for the high school. Um, it's my recommendation that we look at doing that and centralizing it, because again, this type of data was not available before this, and also, but now we have it. Um, this is the intent to return form. This is also, we use this to, um, project enrollment for the current, the, the upcoming year. This is sent to every family in the district in the spring, and we ask them, are you returning? If you're not returning, where are you going? And if you look in this section, um, we, we ask very specific questions. If you're going to another school, where are you going? Is it another district? Are you going to another state? Are you going to some of the most popular pub, um, private schools in our area, so that we know where we're losing our students to? And we, and thanks to Mrs. Starkins, this was digitized this past year. This used to be a paper form that we had to send out, get back at the site, get it to our office and count them. So, now every, it's all electronic. Okay, this, this is new. This is our disenrollment survey. So, we actually, um, sent this to people, the hundred and forty-one people that we know left. We sent this to them and asked them these questions. And we asked very candidly, why did you leave? Were you pleased with your experience in BHUSD? If not, why? Would you recommend BHUSD to friends and family? And I'm going to try to give you a live look at the survey. There we go. So, this, this is how it looks when they go in, and this, these are the questions that they're asked. And then, the next piece is, we even got a little bit more, we took it to the next level. We have at BVMS, we're aware of fourteen, is that right?
Uh, nine.
Nine, okay, nine families who have requested transcripts. That means that they may be looking at another school. We sent this to those families today, and we asked again, why are you leaving? Will you be coming back next year? If you're not, where are you going? Why are you leaving? And we're getting responses. So, we will compile those and then share that with the board at a later date. So, um, yeah, Ms. Starkins, please. And Ms. Starkins has been instrumental in helping develop these surveys and getting these Google forms up and running.
So, those families who are requesting transcripts, they're only going to be, their place is pending, right? They haven't been accepted necessarily into private school.
Right.
Um, so what we're wanting to capture here is, it's one thing to know that a kid has left, and they've dis-enrolled, and they've withdrawn, and they've gone to a different district or a different state or a different private school or those sorts of people. But a lot of kids will apply, but they won't necessarily actually make the move.
Right.
And so, we're in this in-between time where I said, when I was thinking about it, well, they end up staying, but they were thinking of leaving. Do we ever capture why they was thinking of leaving?
Yeah.
And so, that's when I reached out to Vivian and, and the team over at BVMS to say, are you getting requests already for transcripts? And she said, yes. And I said, okay, can we send them this email? So, they're doing a great job, and, and it will capture those people who, they might actually end up staying with us. Um, but we can hear, what are the hesitations? What are the things going well for you? What are the things not going well for you? And what are the reasons? Were you planning always just to leave at eighth grade, at the end of eighth grade? Or is there something else going on here that we can address?
Right. Okay, and that is the end of my presentation. Any questions for me?
Wow, very complete, wow. Ah, Mrs., first of all, thank you for that report. It was amazing. And I know it's been a long time in coming, and I know we were expecting it last time, but something happened. But I'm really glad that we were able to get that report and to see what's going on in the Student Services Department these days. And it looks like you're pretty busy.
Yes, I am.
So, um, I, uh, I have a few questions myself, but I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Wells, and we'll start over at the, and see if she has some comments or come, Kristen.
Um, well, Laura, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, it's just something when you look at all the areas that you're overseeing, you're really overseeing some of the, um, hardest-hit areas from the pandemic. And I just really appreciate your dedication and focus on these programs. Um, I really, just starting with special ed, I think it's incredible that how fortunate we are as a community that we have, uh, this array of support services for our students in our community that allows them to stay in school in district or to have time within, within their day to be able to participate in general ed and all the, you know, the full array of options that you have to support the students. And I think that's really an incredible, uh, asset that our school district has that, that probably many people don't fully appreciate or understand. Um, I think as well, the social emotional piece is so important as well, given the pandemic especially. And the work that you're doing there, I think, is incredible as well with PBS. And congratulations on the award last year that, um, that all of the schools received. I think that's a great sign of, of success. Um, I would say that, um, as well, I mean, with the bullying program, I think that's great, and you have data that you're seeing. And those numbers are really wonderful and are really positive, uh, reinforcement for the programs that you're doing. Uh, the only thing I would say, and I think it already exists, but, um, I think not only just for the students, and it's not that you don't have enough to do, but, um, I think all of those programs from the social emotional learning to, um, the bullying program to PBIS, um, is to also include our, our talk about next time, because I know you've talked about it a lot tonight, but how we also support the teachers and the parents, and so that that's at full, um, like a three-sixty, um, program in terms of educating them and supporting them in all of these areas so that they can also support our students. And I think that all works together. And I know that we're already doing it. We just, we didn't touch on it that much tonight. Um, but other than that, I would just say, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. And I love to hear as well that you're addressing, um, enrollment and looking into, um, more information so that we can be, uh, addressing enrollment in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and yes, um, just FYI, in my next update, I will be talking about the parent nights that are up and coming. I was supposed to say that, so thank you for reminding me that. We have parent night scheduled for PBIS for February at every site.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Rayber.
Well, first of all, I want to just give a, a round of applause for that presentation and all the work that you and your team do for our students. It's really amazing to just see the, the scope, like Mrs. Wells was saying, just the amount, the sheer amount of things that you and your team oversee. It's fantastic. Um, so, thank you for the report. I've got some questions.
Sure.
So, with the, the students that are, are sent away to, to other sites, what, how much, like, larger of a cost per student generally is that to the district than it would be keeping them here?
That is a amazingly astute question, and I'm going to answer it like all the attorneys that I work with. It depends.
Okay.
In, in that, I will give you a range. It depends on if they need solely a non-public school placement, which is, um, our schools in the surrounding areas that we work with. That cost can run between forty to fifty-five thousand dollars per year. Now, Mr. Wade has, Mr. Roach, excuse me, has, has graciously given me the figure that we use to kind of, as our baseline for educating our students in district, which is a little bit over twenty-four thousand dollars per year. So, the difference between that twenty-four, like, let's say twenty-four thousand five hundred and that forty to fifty-five range, forty-five, forty to fifty-five thousand dollar range would be the difference. There is a caveat, though. Some students need more intensive support. They need to attend school outside of their home and live away from their home. And that's called residential placement, and it's, and when it's educationally necessary, we are required as a school district to pay for that. Um, that can be upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, depending on the school. But I'm happy to say, we had eight of those when I came. We have one. And, and we, um, just kind of tying it in, I know you didn't ask that, but I wanted to say, the, the, the continuum of placement options is, uh, is a great deal of help for that, because like I said, we're able to keep our students home. But also, um, it's reduced the number of legal filings that we have. Because we, we, people used to file because we didn't have a place for their student, and they would file because they wanted us to pay for those other placements, and we had to. So, it's a twofold, excuse me, it's a twofold, um, process or, or result.
Thank you very much. That's, that's amazing to see. Um, I want some acronym clarification. I saw on the, the list of teachers, there were SAI teachers and CEC teachers, and I was just curious what those stood for.
SAI stands for specialized academic instruction. That is the, that is the type of teaching that special education, special education teachers provide to their students. So, it's, 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 it used to be, it just, it used to be called RSP and SDC. About eight, or ten years now ago, they changed it to SAI. That's the catch-all term.
Okay.
And what was the other one?
The CEC.
Counseling Enrich Class.
Okay.
That's the one that we have at the middle school and the high school.
Perfect. Um, where am I looking now? Oh, I just wanted to mention, it's great to see Norman Aid get expanded to helping out at the, uh, middle school and just have a, have a greater role on campus at the high school. I know it's very beneficial, so I'm very happy to see that. Uh, in terms of enrollment, what is the, the USD, NPS, or, uh?
Oh, those, those are the ones that are outside of the district.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to, to clarify that. And then, uh, just curious, why do you think sixth grade slash middle school sees the largest drop, uh, in enrollment generally? Or is that just due to the, the general larger size of those grades compared to the elementary schools?
I think it's statistically relevant that it's a larger class, but you know what? I'm gonna refrain from comment until we have some time to look at these, uh, surveys that we're getting back, and then I can probably give a more informed answer.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Halemi.
Thank you so much for that robust report. I'm gonna try to avoid, uh, to commenting on the same things that my colleagues already have. But really, thank you. And, uh, I, I know that Dr. Breggy was going to try to find us time to sort of sit down and do a deep dive, but this was, this was great.
I had you in mind when I did this.
Well, thank you. Uh, to thank you so much. So, um, a couple of things that weren't, um, but touched on, or, or, or I guess just a bit of personal experience. And that, um, when you talked about the discipline, uh, it really brought something back, and also what my colleague, uh, uh, Dr. Stern shared, uh, and that's that, you know, the positive reinforcement really does go such a long way. As Ms. Marcus might remember, I wasn't always the best behaved kid. I was a good kid, but I'm always the best behaved. And I feel like there was a lot of opportunities that, um, without really supportive, uh, teachers and administration and taking time with every student, it's really, it would be easy to, um, kind of like, uh, beat a kid up, but emotionally for not, you know, always being, you know, straight on track. And it, 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 it just brought back a lot of memories of how this school district and, and these schools and these teachers and administration have always just, in my experience, done such a great job. And now to see the kind of programs, and I mean, we didn't have this stuff when I was a student. But now to see like, the kind of programs that have been put in place to build around that, it's, it's, it, it, it really is incredible to see. Um, just, uh, I, I love the data. So, so seeing the actual number of suspensions that have gone down, I think it was over a thousand in the middle school just a couple of years ago to where we are now is just, I mean, it's incredible to see that the, that the programs, as wonderful as they sound, are actually working, which is, which is, uh, really phenomenal. So, thank you for that. Um, I don't want to ask the same questions or make the same comments. The disenrollment specifically, uh, thank you for that, uh, but data. I am, I am, you know, very interested in terms of better understanding, uh, to what's going on there. Um, and I, I think, you know, to just regarding maybe the sixth grade, maybe it's a natural inflection point also for people to leave. If we're, you know, to speculating if they're going to go join a new school or, or whatnot. Um, one of the things I just want us to like, think about, and maybe it's just because my kids are at that age right now, is, you know, these, um, how much are we engaging kids in our community that maybe from the very beginning are thinking about private school, right? Um, because, you know, many times they will start at some kind of nursery school program or something at a school where we don't have that, like, we don't have that offering, so they're already in somewhere. That's where my kids fall right now. Um, and how much are we engaging those potential students from the very start, right? Like, a family moves into Beverly Hills, how proactive are we being to make sure they understand the full scope of what we offer at Beverly Hills Unified School District? I mean, if it, if it's just, just going through some of the student services here tonight that we're offering, I mean, I'm, I'm positive it's far more robust than, you know, most people realize when they, when, when they move into this, um, city or when they, you know, happen to live here or whatever, but then they have, uh, you know, kids of age to start going to the schools. Um, so I just, I think that's quite an, that, that may be an opportunity for us to do more proactive outreach to, um, families. And the last thing I'll say is, I, I was, it actually also reminded me that I've personally been the benefit of some of the special needs programs. I, I don't even know if Mrs. Marcus remember this, but I had a, I had a terrible stutter when I was a kid, uh, elementary school, middle school. And, um, had some incredibly supportive, uh, teachers and programs that were in place at the time. And now my colleagues, although, although they've only been working with me for two weeks, have probably noticed that I talk a lot. Um, so, I, you know, uh, obviously, I've come a long way with that, and it's, you know, really, I had, I had a whole change during my years at Hawthorne. So, but Mrs. Mens, if you're listening anywhere, I remember you. I appreciate you. Thank you. She was very instrumental in that process. So, just thank you, and I look forward to working more closely with you when we have time. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that.
Uh, Dr. Stern.
Well, I certainly know these programs well, and every day I work with these aspects. So, I certainly know a good set of, um, programming when I see it, and wow, you met all the marks. I mean, really, in this, in this presentation, I see all the things you're doing, and I know those acronyms, and you, and you said them all, basically. Um, and I can see that you really do offer a range, you know, the spectrum of, a continuum of services, as we say. Um, so, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Margul.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of time, I'll make this very brief. Um, is this presentation going to be available because it wasn't posted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I think, uh, some of the numbers from sixth grade also were that a lot of private schools start in seventh. So, that, that could lead to that, uh, outlier there in sixth grade. But great work. I look forward to follow-up information on this. But I do appreciate everything you presented tonight.
Well, my colleagues have covered everything, almost everything that I wanted to mention. Um, one of the, um, things that I want to say is that the passion that you show for this program and the, the work that you've done is unbelievable in the way that this community, this school district has grown in this area of the, the social, emotional, the special ed, and everything has grown tremendously under your leadership. And I, for that, you are to be complimented. Um, I would just like to say that it was, I re, I remember when I was T, uh, that when the kids were in special ed, I remember this one so special. And I was teaching science to the little kids, and, and I would say to the teachers, and they would program their kids to go to language, or they'd go to occupational therapy or physical therapy, and they were supposed to come to science. And I used to say to them, don't you dare let that student not come to my class. And that just shows the importance of how far we've come of integrating the students into the classroom so that they get the same education that the kids who don't have special education get. And that was one of the biggest things that I always was very, very, I mean, to bring them into the classroom so that they would get the same thing that the other students would get. And that was something that was very, very big in my And that was something that was very, very big in my, my opinion. And, um, and I particularly took great interest in how you changed, how the behavior of bullying has changed from the physical, uh, to the cy, cyber and social, which is really amazing how it has changed from physical and so on. And, and I, I liked that part of the presentation. And of course, I've taken special interest in the fact that the broader your special ed program has become and what services we provide has reduced the number of outside, uh, things that, uh, outside sources that we've had to go to the non-public, um, assistance. So, uh, I can't say enough about this very report. It was fabulous, very complete. And I'm looking forward to seeing more, more. And, and the fact that by one other thing I wrote down is, always looking to improve and always trying to bring in new ideas and new things to the program is amazing. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your having.
Can I just ask one last, one, one, a really quick question that I forgot? The, the, I, I, I so appreciate you bringing up how the effects of, of a COVID, um, you know, uh, really, uh, how, how we're going to need better social, emotional learning programs. Have we seen the engagement in the social, emotional programs, like, you know, increase now as like, uh, you know, kids now coming back? I mean, something as simple as wearing masks and not being able to, you know, to necessarily quickly understand what someone else is thinking based on what they just said. How, how much are we seeing the need for these programs and the engagement for them kind of, but increased because of COVID?
Tenfold. It, 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 those are the conversations that all of cabinet is having with our school site administrators. Kids are coming back, you know, uh, you think about it, our first grade students, our kindergarten students have never been in school. This was their first experience in, in-person learning. So things like sitting down for several time, how to, how, how to interact with your students, you know, uh, your, your peers. Um, every week, every day, we're talking about, okay, these are the things we're seeing. How can we support them? What types of lessons do we need to put in place to teach them how to just be in school or do school? So yes, it is, it is very timely, it is very much needed, and it's why we had to address it. Um, the other piece of that coin that I didn't get into, but it is also something that we're working on, is how do we support the adults in the environment as well? For our teachers and our support staff and everyone else, because they also have lasting effects from, from home learning and COVID. So that, that's the other part that we're working on as well.
Yeah, I think, I, I just wonder about, you know, of, of, of course, we're gonna keep our kids safe. That is our primary, you know, uh, responsibility. I love the, the, the kind of testing we have in place and whatnot. But we always have to think about, right, both sides here. You know, we, we have these masks, we have this, we have all this stuff, like, what kind of effect is this taking? And what can we do to counterbalance that, right? And I just, you know, I really appreciate that you're thinking about that and, and, and the programs we have in place. And, um, I just, I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Chisholm.
All right. Good night.
Okay, um, that will bring us to, uh, the item thirteen A under Business and Finance, the first interim report. And I see that Mr. Wade Roach has approached the podium to give us a little bit of a report.
Good. Thank you, President Marcus, members of the board. So three times a year, I come before the board to have you certify and adopt budget numbers. So in June of every year, you certify and adopt the budget. Uh, in December, you certify the budget again, um, for the term through October thirty-first. And you'll do it again in March through the end of January. So this is the first interim report. So this is through the end of, uh, October. And this is budget numbers, not actual numbers, budget numbers. I'm gonna just fly through this pretty fast. Just some interesting facts about our general fund budget, which is our operating budget. When you look at our revenue, this is where our revenue comes from. So sixty-six cents of every dollar in our general fund comes from local Beverly Hills property taxes. Uh, sixteen cents comes from other local revenue, the JPA, the PTAs, the BGF, gifts and donations. Um, so you see a majority of our revenue comes from the city and the community of Beverly Hills. Nine cents comes from the wonderful state of California, and nine cents comes from Washington DC. So we take those dollars and this is how we spend them. We are an employee-centered organization. So seventy-one cents of every one of those dollars we just talked about goes to employee salary and benefits. Twenty cents goes to other operations, like insurance, utilities, legal, contracts, consultants. Seven cents goes to books and supplies, and two cents goes to deferred maintenance. Okay, pretty interesting facts for the board. So this slide is just your general fund, uh, uh, change from adopted budget. You see there in the middle, the adopted budget, the change at first interim. And you see the total change in, uh, uh, revenue from adopted budget. You see a, a jump of four point three million, and that's really carryover of COVID dollars that we've carried over and put in the budget now that we've closed the budget from last year. You can see here the expenses in the general fund, uh, increased by another about four million dollars also, uh, as we carried funds over from last year. Uh, the operational impact of the first, at the first interim is that our projected deficit has gone down from about three point two million to just about two point nine million dollars. And our ending fund balance is up about two point seven million dollars. You say that's only two fifty-seven. How'd it get to two point seven? Well, our beginning balance, when we adopted the budget, we didn't know what our beginning fund balance was gonna be for twenty-one, twenty-two. We don't know that until September when we close the books. So our beginning balance went up from seventeen point three million to nineteen point eight million. And that's why your def, your difference there is two point seven million dollars. Uh, this is just our assumptions and placeholders for the two out years. At first interim and second interim, you have to do not only the, the current year budget, but you have to project for, uh, multi-years, uh, out years. Um, so those are just some of our assumptions for the out years. And these are our projected numbers for the out years. You'll see that, uh, um, in twenty-two, twenty-three, um, the projected deficit drops from two point nine million dollars to three hundred and thirty-five thousand. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, the current projection is operating, operating deficit will be about nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and you can see at the bottom of the screen, our current reserve for economic uncertainty is just gonna be just around thirty percent. And you'll talk about that probably at a later, you know, later board item. Remember, these numbers are very conservative at this point in the year. I'm very conservative with our revenue projections and our expenditure projections. So at the end of the year, most likely, these numbers will be much better. I'm not really gonna go through all the other funds, other than to show you the cafeteria fund. For the first time in forever, we will not have a general fund contribution into the cafeteria fund because of the change in that program. Thank you, federal and state governments. Um, not really, these are all, you can look at these slides uh, on your own. Second interim's around the corner. By the time second interim comes, we'll have the governor's, uh, proposed budget in January. That may make, meet some changes for us. We're expecting, we heard in the last week or so, some more special ed dollars. So we're excited about that. Uh, we'll have a pandemic response update, uh, with our COVID dollars. And any updates on any changes in, uh, potential legal settlements are stated in funeral, federal funding. Just for your information, we put in some slides here on, uh, pre-COVID enrollment trends. Just so the board can see in these, uh, kind of similarly situated, uh, districts around the state, first around the county and then around the state, that there was already an enrollment decline before COVID. So it's something that we'll be talking about ad nauseam, uh, in January and February when we have our demographic study completed. Um, and then finally, the board wanted to know kind of how we're expending our COVID dollars. And you can see here, um, all these new programs that the state and federal government have created related to COVID. Uh, the budget is about seven point nine million. In the current year, we've expensed one point seven. We've, uh, encumbered about eight hundred, about seven hundred and fifty thousand. And we're, we have about five and a half million dollars available. So tonight, what I'm gonna ask the board to do is to approve a positive certification for our budget. What that means is, there's three types of certifications. And this is really for Gabe, cause you guys are all old hat with this. But there's three types of certification. A negative certification says that we're gonna run out of money in the current fiscal year, so we need some help really bad. Uh, a qualified, uh, certification is that we'll probably make it through this year, but we're not gonna have a sufficient reserve in the out years. And a positive certification tells the county that we've got sufficient reserves, sufficient cash for the current year and the two out years. So I'm gonna ask the board to approve this report as a positive certification. And that's it.
President Marcus, can I make a motion to approve the interim, first interim budget with positive certification?
Yes, you may.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made by, uh, Mr. Margul, seconded by Dr. Stern to make a positive, uh, certification to the, uh, uh, Los Angeles County Office of Education, I believe. And if there's any questions, we can go around, uh, Mary, Mrs. Wells.
Uh, I have no questions, but thank you very much, Wade.
Mr. Raymer.
Thank you as well. No questions for me.
Mr. Halimi.
W- w- was the deck that we looked at uploaded, uh, or?
It's on the agenda.
I saw, are we on, uh, are we on? Yeah, but wanna, oh, is there more than one attachment?
Yeah, there's two attachments.
Thank you. I missed the second attachment. Okay. I looked at the first one. I'm good. Thank you, Wade.
Okay, Dr. Stern.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Margul.
Um, just a quick, uh, comment. I, in the rush through the pandemic, we have been, um, spending a lot of money, um, on a lot of useful programs to, you know, um, support our student learning. And I, I just, I wanna make sure that we're keeping a close eye on all of the programs that we've implemented or that, that may be going away when COVID funding goes away. Um, it seems that, that the jump in our expenditures from a couple of years ago is huge now. And I know a lot of that is COVID. But, um, I, I wanna keep a balance so student learning isn't affected when all of these funds dry out. And that, um, we should work to really maintain that thirty percent, um, if that's what we approve tonight. And that I know we're not quite there in a couple of the years. In fact, we may get there next year. And with your conservative estimating, we may be there now. But we should make sure that we're budgeting, um, in a way to maintain that a little stronger. I, I just, it, there's so much going on that it's hard for us to take a step back. We, and, and this is, you know, staff is overwhelmed, and I appreciate what you're all doing. But to take a step back and, and say, are all of these programs that we are funding, um, from the general fund, are they successful? Are they working and should they continue? Because it's, it's very hard when you're in, caught up in this tornado of the pandemic to stop and really have time to evaluate that. But it's a question that should remain on the back of our mind, being that this board is, you know, we're the fiduciary responsibility part here. So to say to the staff, just keep that in mind as we're moving forward and the COVID funds begin to dry out. What programs are gonna go? What are gonna stay? How are we gonna maintain our successful budgeting practices that we seem to be having a good, um, a good run with? So that was my comment. Thank you.
I, um, was thinking the same thing about, uh, when the funds dry out and some of the programs that we've installed, will we be able to continue to fund them in the future? And I think that that's something, that, that's why I looked at this five million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand odd, blah, blah, blah. Now, how much of that is already earmarked if we know if any of that will be still available for future funding of the programs? Or was that all for, uh, supplies and the materials that?
That's a great, uh, question, President Marcus. At the rate we're spending in the programs we've adopted, um, that, those funds will last probably another eighteen months or so, uh, into next year.
Those are for the testing programs you're talking?
Well, that's for testing and all the other related COVID, uh, um, intervention programs.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so I, uh.
Uh, sorry, can I ask one more question? Uh, it just, it was, it was sort of flipping really quick, and I didn't have a chance to look at the attachment before. I didn't know you can kind of click and see more attachments. I'm still learning this system. So later on in the, in the agenda here, we're looking at, um, a board policy that's essentially training our reserves from twenty-five to thirty percent. You were already assuming in the out years that we're moving to a thirty percent, right? Did I, did I, did I see that, right, that the reserves are moving to, to thirty percent already?
The numbers, uh, indicate that we'll be at thirty percent, so that we have.
That we'll just be at thirty percent in new ways. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, also, we'll call for the question. Mrs. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margul?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes, and it passes with a five and O and the provisional six and O.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mrs. Marcus, just a point of order. I think Eli is supposed to vote first.
Okay.
So just calling that up.
I, I always go according to where I see it, but I, I know it makes it hard for.
I just, I just, I read our board policies, which need updating in some places, but that's been the same rule for twenty years. So that one I know was.
Nobody has corrected me up until right now. Okay, uh.
I'll, I'll make a motion to reject claim number five nine nine seven two six.
I'll second.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Margul moved, uh, we reject the claim, uh, seconded by Dr. Stern. Uh, uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Halimi?
I'm sorry, I don't know what claim five nine nine seven two six is. I don't have an attachment for that, no.
So this was, uh, I, I shared this earlier, um, in a document, uh, earlier. Yes, this, well, it was, it was actually, I shared it, um, I think on Saturday or Sunday. I, I gave kind of the update of, um, this is a, a particular, a legal case.
If you can give me, um, up to twenty seconds to look this up. I just wanna make sure that I'm thinking about the right one. Apologies.
No, no problem. I can resend it too.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margul?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. So it passes five and O with the provisional vote of six and O. Okay, um, why did I lose my, uh, in first interim, uh, okay, approval of, uh, other, with a rejection. The next one, thirteen C, approval of other post-employment benefits.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the OPEB benefits, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Actual evaluation and Gatsby seventy-five report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Halimi. Uh, moved and seconded by Mr. Margul and then Mr. Halimi. Uh, the approval of the other post-employment benefits, uh, discussion. Ms. Wells?
Hi, no comment.
Uh, Mr. Halimi, this, uh, Mr. Raymer, I'm sorry.
None for me.
Okay, Mr. Halimi?
Uh, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Dr. Stern?
No questions.
And Mr. Margul?
I have one question. Um, in reviewing the report, I just wanna confirm that the liability now is the sixteen million number? That is correct? Okay. Cause well, before we started pre-funding the OPEB, the liability was twenty-eight million, I believe. Yeah, something like that. So it's really impressive that we have knocked that number down. That's, that's, a lot of public agencies have trouble with this. Um, and I'm so proud of the past board and all of the boards till today that have supported this funding of the OPEB because it will eventually take the liability, um, off the plate of, of the board if we continue to do this. So thank you, and thank you, Wade.
And, uh, I, you, you are voting yes then, correct? Did I go around?
We, we didn't call for a vote. That was just comments.
I did not call for the vote. Okay. Starting with you, Mr., call for the question, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margul?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, this next item is a discussion and a possible revision, so I think we will, uh, I believe we were gonna just do this last time and be, due to the fact that you are not going to be here, Mr. Margul, we postponed it until just now. So, um, I think we will have a, let's have the, we can discuss it with the approval, I think, right? Discussion will help, make a motion and then have a discussion? We wanna do the discussion, I think.
I, I'd like to do the discussion first because in case it changes the language.
Okay, because of the language. Okay, okay, so let's, uh, we're, we have a, a change for the facilities and construction committee to add, uh, the, um, a seven eleven, uh, committee member as an ex officio member, I believe, and that is under discussion right now. So I'll start with you, Mrs. Wells.
Um, I have nothing to add. I did, I do recall when we first. Um, I have nothing to add. I did, I do recall when we first talked about setting up this committee that, um, I think it was you, Mr. Margot, that had suggested we include a seven eleven committee, uh, member. So I think it makes sense, um, to do that now. And, um, if we do do that change, there's one other item on there. When I was reading it, it says that the committee would be no more than twelve. And if we add the ex officio, uh, seven eleven committee former member, that would probably be, that would make it that thirteen.
Is that, is that included in the, uh, the, uh, the revision of the?
No, it would have to be a friendly amendment, uh?
Okay, that's what I'm trying to find out. Okay, um, Mr. Raymer?
I'm just kind of curious, cause I know, um, Mr. Roach serves on the seven eleven committee and then also the assistant superintendent business, uh, services is an ex officio member of the, uh, FCC. So I was just curious if it was necessary to include an additional member of the seven eleven committee or if Mr. Roach could fill that role, uh, as a member on that committee?
Well, I would like to say, I believe that the seven eleven committee is, uh, no longer a, a committee. That was a, that was an ad hoc committee.
Mr. Roach?
So President Marcus, members of the board, uh, on the FCC, I'm just a, a, a resource for that committee. I'm not a ex officio or any type of member. I'm just a, a resource for that committee. Uh, I was on the seven eleven committee, but you're, you're right, that committee has been disbanded. It was an ad hoc committee.
Uh, may I ask a, a clarifying question then? Cause on a, on the, the guidelines, you're with, the assistant superintendents and superintendent in attendance are listed as ex officio members, which would be the same as, um, what the, the, the? So I'm not, I'm not sure if there's a slight difference due to your, your position in the district administration as to a general ex officio member?
Uh, I think you just appointed me now, Eli. So ex officio members are generally someone that's served on the committee in the past. And then, and they stay on board because of their expertise and knowledge. Um, um, so, I mean, you can call me an ex officio or call the superintendent, but we don't vote.
Right. I mean, I think that the idea behind that is that the, um, the committee members have been appointed or were, I'm not, I wasn't there when you formed the seven eleven committee, but, um, however, they were, uh, uh, appointed or, I don't know how they were chosen to be on that committee.
They apply.
Application process.
Yeah. I, I just, sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I was just going to say the difference between Wade and the other committee members is that they are, um, you know, the committee members that were sitting on that committee. So if we were going to, um, you know, use, have someone representing that was a committee member versus staff, that would be the difference for you, Eli.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to add, um?
Well, we, we're still going around though.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Halimi?
So we're making a change here, um, and adding a seven eleven committee representative as an ex officio, but there's no seven eleven committee anymore? So what are we doing? I, I don't understand.
I was going to try to solve that by just, if we just added the language as needed. Have the seven eleven committee rep, if the seven eleven committee is formed, then the seven eleven committee can send a representative to this meeting.
That would make sense.
And I think that's all we need to do.
Okay.
Um, so just add the words as needed.
Are you suggesting then that we make that revision now or wait until the seven eleven committee is, perhaps there's another seven eleven committee?
No, I think we can put it in now and then we don't have to revisit it. And then we can change the twelve to thirteen as needed. And just follow that with the term as needed. So if there is a seven eleven, a seven eleven committee, they're welcome to join the facility in construction because if they are directly related at that time.
I understand. Okay.
So your, your recommendation would be at the very end of the sentence in H or just the seven eleven committee representative ex officio member in parentheses as needed?
That's exactly it.
Okay.
Okay, I have one other thing. Um, no, we never officially have recognized the seven eleven committee for their work that they did. And I think that's, uh, an oversight on our part as a board. And I would recommend that we, we correct that and, and thank the seven eleven committee for the time that they spent, um, doing that work.
That's a very-
We can do that. Absolutely.
Good suggestion. Dr. Stern?
Um, yes, I mean, the change makes sense to me and, uh, point well taken, um, Ms. Wells, that the seven eleven committee, you know, deserves some recognition for their hard work.
And a lot of time that they put in on it also. Mr. Margot?
Thank you. So now that it's my turn, I will make a, um, a, uh, motion to amend the facility and construction committee guidelines to include H with the addition of as needed and to change not more than twelve to thirteen members as needed. So, so if any time it lists twelve, we change it to thirteen as needed.
Okay, who made the original motion?
Nobody did. We were waiting.
Oh, we didn't make one. Okay. So we're now making the motion?
I just did.
As, okay, and?
And I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Okay, uh, I concur with the change. I think it's a good one and I think it's appropriate. So if there is no further discussion, I will call for this question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
And Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. It passes with a provision, a vote of six and O with five and O vote. Uh, Pam, did you get that motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just checking.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Uh, okay, approval of the second and final reading of the board policy thirty-one hundred. This is the one dealing with the budget. And motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the second and final reading of board policy thirty-one hundred.
And I will second the motion. So it's been moved?
Very seconded.
Oh, very seconded, okay. All right, moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Wells. Um, and then discussion, uh, going around, uh, Mrs. Wells?
Uh, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Raymer?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Mr. Halimi?
Uh, I didn't see a red line on this, but the probably just because it predates my involvement with, uh, my position on the board. Uh, so are we just changing the twenty-five percent to thirty percent? That's the only change in this policy or were there other changes?
No, I think that was it completely.
Wade, it doesn't seem so sure looking at his eyes.
That was it with the?
I think there, there may have been a few words meant, but nothing, nothing, um, policy wise.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Doc, anything from Dr. Stern?
No, no comment.
Mr. Margot?
Nope, thank you.
Same for me, so I'll call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It passes with a five and O vote, six and O with the provisional vote. And that has now brought us to the board communications. Uh, and the first one to go tonight again is Mrs. Wells.
Um, well, I'd like to, uh, just say to Danielle Hollander, congratulations on your success this year and, uh, your many achievements and to thank you for being a wonderful role model and inspiration for, uh, our community. And as well to, um, to give a big bravo to the Beverly Vista Middle School and the orchestra. And that was just really wonderful for me to see. And I really look forward to seeing them in person. And I just love listening to some of my favorite music. So thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Raymer?
Uh, well, there's one thing I wanted to mention that I forgot to say during my board report, and that is to give some photo credit to Kate Contlier, one of the, uh, members of the editorial team for Highlights and, uh, Watchtower. Um, she provided lots of the photos for Albion in, in addition to, um, those of soccer, as well as to Kaylin Wee, who's another member of Watchtower and Highlights, who provided some pictures of wrestling for me to use. Uh, they're always great helps. And, uh, also like, uh, Mrs. Wells was saying, a great job to the BVMS orchestra students who are here. I look forward to seeing your concerts in the future and to seeing you continue with instrumental music hopefully through high school. Uh, I'm hoping that the band and orchestra, uh, leadership teams are able to get down to the middle school a, a couple more times throughout the year to essentially pitch, uh, instrumental music to, to try to retain as many members in those programs as possible. But yeah, thank you very much. Uh, and please continue to stay safe.
Mr. Halimi?
Um, during the, during the last board communication, um, at the last board meeting, uh, one of the comments that I made was that I was, I was concerned and I thought that there was an issue with transparency and accountability with, um, uh, the, the, the construction process bond manager. And one thing that I wanted to note is I, I, you know, we saw the Don Blake here tonight. I reached out to him after the board meeting. I, I, I spent, um, two, three hours with him last Friday and just kicked off, uh, a discussion with him about how we can go about having a better process for, um, reporting to this board, better engagement. Um, I think the information exists. I think we need to get better information up to this board as, uh, the fiduciaries for the school district. I explained my concerns to him and I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm but optimistic about what I'm seeing. And I, I, I think, um, I appreciated him, uh, to being here, uh, but tonight and the report that he gave us. And, uh, I look forward to working with the board and just setting, uh, a better process for everyone in place for the better communication, uh, there. Um, as I made clear when I was interviewing with the board, I thought process and the way that we, uh, that operate with excellence is something that we could do better at. I think this is one of those areas. And so far, I'm just optimistic by what I'm, um, seeing. And I think that there's more work to do and I just, uh, wanted to note that. Um, I also, as I, I, as I spoke with, uh, Dr. Breggy about this and wanted to bring this up for the board, uh, I'm an attorney, I'm a nerd. I read through all of our board policies at some point before I sat up here. Uh, I think there's a number of areas that we can improve those policies and I look forward to working with, uh, but Dr. Breggy to make some updates. Uh, some of those are also process related, the way that we govern. I think that there's, um, work that we can do there and, uh, I just look forward to partnering with, uh, but Dr. Breggy.
And, and just to give you an update, so they're, they're all being updated. So it's, it's part of a overhaul program. COVID got a little bit in the way. It's very tedious and time consuming, uh, but we are working on all of those changes, so, and updates.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. That's it. Thanks.
Dr. Stern?
This is a little bit of a different tone, but can we just take a moment to just give our respect to those four innocent high school students in Michigan who were murdered? I mean, when we have a catastrophe like that in this country, it really affects all of us. And we can't, we just cannot, you know, let it slide. So I just, my heart, and I don't, yeah, my heart really goes out to that loss for that school and that community, those poor, poor parents, um, of those victims. And, uh, it is something that all school districts will continue to have to face. And it is a multi-pronged problem, uh, a failure of parenting, uh, perhaps an oversight of the acuity of this student's difficulties. Uh, there are issues of lethal weapons in the possession of, of teenagers. There's all sorts of issues. But I just would be remiss as to not, uh, give my, um, deepest condolences, um, as someone who works in education, that this has happened yet again and has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Stern for bringing that up. Um, a couple of things tonight. Um, first of all, Gabe, pleasure working with you tonight. First time. Um, hopefully we're having fun. Are we having fun? I'm not going to let you live that one down. Um, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Valens, wonderful music students. Um, I would have just seen that and called the meeting right after that. It would have been the best meeting of the year so far. Um, it's a pleasure to see, um, her work and her dedication, um, having had two children that went through her program. It's just, it's amazing. And hopefully those students know how lucky they are. Um, I wanted to take a quick second. I attended the LAXA meeting yesterday and they had, uh, the main topic was English learner roadmap, English learner roadmap. So I forwarded all the information to Mr. Seaman so they can disseminate it through the proper channels. But it, uh, it was just a big section on English learners and what the state is doing in those regards. Um, I wanted to acknowledge, having done this job twice before, acknowledge, um, President Marcus for her year as president, as this is your last regular meeting. Um, and there will be a lot of comments made next week, but today is actually your last regular meeting. So I just want to acknowledge your year as president. Thank you for serving the community in that capacity. Um, no matter what, it's not an easy job and it's certainly not a glorious job. So I do appreciate that. Um, and finally, I want to thank the entire community for their support, um, from my recent loss, um, of my father and how the outpouring of, of everybody, district-wide, board-wide, faculty, students, and just general people in the community, um, all really, um, helped me get through and continue to help me get through this time. So thank you, everyone, for that. And, uh, it's one of the first times in a long time I have felt that I lived in a caring community. Um, didn't, you know, not the kind of thing you want to happen to make you see that. But, um, it was a good example of how we actually can come together and do good for each other and should continue on that path and not just during Christmas time, all year long. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those words. Well, I would just like to add as, uh, Mr. Margot just said, this is the last meeting that I will be chairing the president's chair. And I'll have a few words to say about that next week, which I'll reserve for then. Um, I would just like to say that I am looking forward to attending all the music concerts that are coming up in the next week or two before the holidays. I, that's one of the biggest highlights for me is to, to go to those concerts and enjoy it. And we got a little brief interview or a little brief preview tonight, which was very, very nice. And again, I, I'm, I just want to say that it's been, uh, different to sit in this chair. And, um, I'll, next week it'll be a, another change. So thank you for your help.
Well, you'll get to talk first every time.
What did you say?
You'll get to talk first every time.
Well, I changed it around a lot, so I didn't always, I, I always waited till the end because I knew everybody would tell everything that I had to say, so I wouldn't have to talk so much. But I, uh, again, um, I wish, uh, everybody, we'll see you all next week and, um, thank you again. And, uh, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. It's now eight thirty-five. And thank you again for attending the meeting. And, uh, we'll see you next, next Tuesday on the fourteenth for the, uh, reconfiguration of the, uh, the reorganization. So thank you very much and good evening.
Thank you. Thank you board for my thirty percent. Appreciate it.